One.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the tunnel meeting. This is the third episode and it's gonna be a big lineup for this one. We've got a lot of people lined up and ready to talk about all Warcraft III actuality. So we've got Taker from Germany, the Orc from old days who loves these towers. We got Crota, excellent Starcraft and Warcraft caster joining us as well. And one, the German undead who just announced he joined a new team. Congratulations. We've got Lado, the proud owner of the horse that is next to him on the camera right now. And also an excellent Night Elf streamer. And then OC, who's gonna be in Anaheim, one of the best NA Night Elf, maybe after Lado, I guess.
Number two, number two.
Alright guys, welcome to the show. Let's get right into it. Every single guest that's come so far on the show has been a different one from episode to episode. Lado is the first returning guest, but I would like to talk with you guys about the Reforged launch. And just anything you have to say. Crota, you're only gonna be here for two hours, so we'll try and give you the priority to talk as much as possible. Go ahead first.
Alright, Reforged launch, I think everyone can agree that it was a bit of a disaster. But I think one of the reasons why was Blizzard really was marketing to the wrong crowd. And they really weren't marketing to us, right? Like, we knew what we wanted. We knew we wanted like overlays, MMR, all of the things that we had just better. And when they originally created it, they said, "We are gonna remake this game. We're gonna improve the graphics and it's gonna look absolutely awesome. We're gonna redo the voices and it's gonna tie to World of Warcraft." And the Warcraft III community is like, "No, absolutely not. We are not WoW. We do not want any of that. Don't do that." Right? But that was their main pull. They were like, "We have this huge WoW base. We wanna get them into the real-time strategy. We're gonna bring in artists and all of these things." And it kind of just fell apart. I mean, if you look at the individual units, they look beautiful. But as a whole collectively, in a real-time strategy, your eyes don't know what to focus on. And things start to fall apart there. What do you guys think? I mean, I'm sure you guys have all read the forums, all of that as well. What's your take?
Yeah, I think what you described is the number one problem, that you can't really tell apart. It's really hard to get a sense of what's going on as soon as the battle is getting a little bit bigger. Then two grunts against five footmen or so. But as soon as you have like a 50 against 50 army clashing, it's really hard for me still. Even if I, let's say, see the Back to Warcraft streams and they are doing it on Reforged graphics. It's still kind of sometimes hard to tell apart what's belonging to which person. And I think that's the main problem for me personally, why I don't play on the Reforged graphics yet. Because I'm just hoping that they will find a way to get that a bit closer to the original Warcraft. To really be able to tell apart, okay, this is my grunt, he's nearly dead. And it's not washed in with the background of the map. That's like my main problem as well.
Honestly, I would say my main problem is, I've actually gotten used to graphics. It took a lot of games, trust me. But the biggest issue is the unit frames. It's honestly not the same game when you're on those graphics. For example, you're surrounding a unit, right? Say you got four units, you surround something. Whenever all the units are right on it, if you click your move key or whatever your hotkey is one more time, it'll target one of your units and it goes to surround that. And that is the most tilted thing in my opinion when it comes to those graphics. It's honestly game losing.
Yeah. What OC, basically what you're talking about is the hitboxes changing.
Exactly.
Which is, that's one of the things that they really screwed up. In terms of the mechanics, it's essentially supposed to be a reskin. So none of that, none of like mechanic wise, none of that was supposed to change. Change that did alter the hitboxes, because the hitboxes 100% changed. Now, it's kind of, to be honest, it's kind of hard to notice unless you're doing certain things. But if you're a high level player, like anything that is not normal feels very, very bad. And what OC was talking about is one of those things that just, it feels wrong when you're playing. And it just sticks out like a sore thumb. And it kind of makes you lose faith in other things that you're doing in the game as well. Because you're like, "Oh, well, if this changed, you know, is this gonna work as well?" So yeah, that's, I agree with OC, that's one of my gripes as well. Changing the hitboxes, I'm sure it was unintended, but it's not good for the game.
Yeah. Now, I think with the graphic changes, it will be quite tough actually in the near future. I think like, we don't really know how Blizzard is gonna improve the graphics in the future. But as a player, I don't really see using the Reforged graphics right now at all and probably in the future. Since, I mean, if you compare like different games, for example, Counter-Strike, all these pro players try to minimize the details just to see or get a better overview of these fights. And I think the same just goes for Warcraft III. So I don't really think that the graphic will matter too much for at least the players. But as a viewer, it will be pretty tough actually in the future.
Yeah. I think when they originally set out, they think they were gonna try and remake the game. And then they heard the community and they're like, "Hey, let's just remaster the game." And then it came into this weird middle ground and they failed at both. It's not quite a remaster, it's not quite a remake. And it feels different and the same in all the wrong ways. And it's just taken a little bit of time for us to learn it all.
So while staying realistic, you know, let's not go crazy and say like, "Oh no, we want a giant circuit and all these changes." What changes would you guys like to see added to the game? Whether like, that can concern everything around Warcraft III and Reforged. Whether it's UI, you know, ping servers, or just the playability, or even the graphics. What is it that you guys would like to see added? Like, let's say, in 2020 by Blizzard, if they were to work on the game, like, what do you want to see added?
From my side, I would like to see some more observer tools similar to what you guys have in Starcraft. So seeing how many workers were lost, how many units were killed by the specific unit, for instance. Stuff like that, I think, can be improved quite a lot. Basically, we're still with the same tools that we had 20 years ago in terms of what we see on the screen. So it really, there was nothing added at all, which I found a little bit disappointing. And yeah, I think that would be the number one thing. And just to go back to the thing that I said before, you also have to appreciate that the graphics are actually looking really nice if you zoom in, which is of course not really good for us. But what I was wondering, and that's a question for you Todd, do you think it's possible when you observe a game and you stream the DreamHack event, to have a few moments where you kind of zoom in a little bit when the situation allows for it? I think that would be a really cool feature for the observers and especially for the new people. Just to see, "Ah, actually it looks really cool." But then of course, without losing the overview of the fight. So you would only really do it if there's like a quiet moment in the game.
Yeah, I think so. I think personally, yeah, the game looks really good zoomed in. The thing is like, it almost never really has any use. Like, nobody's gonna mid-game be like, "Oh, this fight is sick." And then like you zoom in and then you see like the high graphics.
Maybe the death animation, you know?
Yeah, the only moment I guess would be.
You zoom out again.
Yeah, I think like, before people are casting, I guess, maybe sometimes that can happen, but yeah. So that's the priority on what you wanna see added to the game, really?
Ah, no, no, I just wanted to basically say that it's not all bad, you know? But I'm sure we were gonna get to that part as well.
Okay, Crota?
Well, like, I want, you know, observer tools, you know, MMR matchmaking. If, if we actually had like, an American version of NetEase and a European version of NetEase, like, I think a lot of the complaints would be out the window. Like, NetEase is absolutely great as a way to get the players to play together. There's ranking systems, you can follow, you can jump into professional games if you wanna see what they're doing. It almost seems like, if they could replicate that to the other places, like, not having to find a specific map and like scour the internet when someone plays a replay on a different map, NetEase will look for it and download it for you for like that convenience. As opposed to like, "Oh, this was from version 1.4 from this particular tournament. They have this extra little logo for no real reason and I can't play this replay to see and study what actually happened during that game."
OC?
So I got a couple things. One, the biggest issue, they fixed this, 80% of people that refunded will probably return. It's that damn ladder system, man. Playing versus Jokolo every other game is so depressing, like, who wants to do that? And you can't show off your rank, there's like nothing to like really convince you to play. Just to have fun and that's it. So that's honestly the number one thing that should be fixed. One thing I think will be very cool and would attract people is an achievement system. Like, let's say you get, you win 50 times of Demon Hunter, you get a cool-looking demon scanner, stuff like that, you know? I think that'll be pretty awesome, give us stuff people to work towards. And of course, the annoying bugs, like the hitboxes that we brought up. I think those three things would be amazing and would help out a ton.
What's your ideal ladder? Like, is it something similar to what W3 Arena had? Like, a mix between what StarCraft has with leagues and something else?
I think the StarCraft League thing is really good, but honestly, even like something like NetEase has. NetEase's MMR system is very good. Like, where you are, you play people as nearby your skill. Like, I really like it. The only downside is we play a super high ping.
And the level thing is a little bit awkward, like you're going backwards.
Yeah. Oh, one more thing, they need a damn U.S.E. server. When you talk about competitive Warcraft III, whatever it's NA versus Europe, we don't have the server in between. We have West Coast and Europe. So whenever West Coast plays Europe or vice versa, they're paying our enemy pretty bad. While U.S.E.'s, like 110 ping in Europe, it's not that bad.
I think some more servers definitely would be nice, even if it's just like a few more, at least the major ones. One?
Yeah, I think for the first part, definitely the ladder system. I think a lot of people kind of disappeared after that. And we see that almost no one really plays ladder right now. Most of the people are still sticking to NetEase or just playing for fun on the Reforged ladder right now. But something that I really wanna see is the spectator mode in-game, so that you can watch your friends in-game with like, just compared to NetEase with a three-minute delay, for example. That would be really fun. Just like OC mentioned, achievements would be also cool. So there would be a long-term goal also for casual players to achieve something. And also something that is important to me is the customize inventory and skill hotkeys or buttons in general. So just like in StarCraft II, so that you can customize every single unit, every single building with their ability, so that you don't have to go into the folder, press Ctrl+F with their unit and skill, and just change it manually. Like, it's so frustrating every single time.
Lado, I think you might wanna add something if you want. I know like, this might be already something that you already talked about, but if you think of something new or you wanna add anything?
So yeah, I don't need to reiterate, all those were great ideas. One thing I do wanna point out is that all of these things that we're asking for, as a community as a whole, these things aren't impossible to achieve. And most of them have already been achieved through third-party programs that are already doing them. So if you look at like, there's like that War Three Keys program that rebinds the hotkeys. There's W3 Booster that people use for overlays and for whatnot. There's other spectator overlays that the, you know, the more well-known casters use. There's NetEase for ladders, there's UU for ping accelerators. Like, there's all these, like, if you actually wanna play Warcraft III at a high level, you basically need like, four different third-party programs that are all running in the background at the same time while you're playing Warcraft III. And for a beginner who doesn't know how to do all of that stuff, that's incredibly, you know, that's a huge barrier to overcome. And that's aside from the fact of like, how to register for NetEase and how to create an account and decipher all the Chinese puzzles to do all that crap? Yeah, it's actually super duper hard if you don't speak Chinese. And, but anyway, like, all of these things that the community wants, these are all things that are already being done. They're just being done by third parties. If they could all just be implemented into Warcraft, I mean, it makes sense, right? It's not rocket science.
Like, isn't it just sad that we needed third-party programs to get at this point, at this time now in 2020?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Last week, we had actually some great discussion with Neo, Remo and Kaldo as well about also helping newer players through like, you know, potentially some like in-game tutorials to learn like build orders and like get familiarized a little bit more with the game. Do you guys have some ideas around this? Like, what do you think would be good? Like, what we mentioned or something different to really like help the newer players that might not be, you know, checking every single website out there? They don't really know how to learn the game or even to get familiar. Because like, if you search on ladder and you've never played a game, chances are you're gonna get kind of smashed like, without even necessarily learning too much right now. So it feels like definitely that area could be improved. So I think all of us are kind of like looking for ideas on how to make that happen. What do you guys think, Crota?
Well, I do agree that any real-time strategy, that learning curve, that first game that you try to play and you queue, you're gonna get stomped down. You don't know what you're doing and how to ease that a little bit. I think it's actually gonna be through custom games. I mean, if we look at the modding community and all of the custom maps out there, if the modding team wanted to say, "You know what, let's figure out a way to help new players play." You can say, "Okay, here's the first four minutes of the game, this is what you need built." And then, and then they stop you at four minutes and say, "This is what a platinum or diamond level player has in their base. These are the points that you missed. You had seven people in your gold mine and one person on the lumber." And being able to do it through a tutorial in a nice matter. I think the modding team can absolutely run with this and then just say, "You know what, here's baby steps for you guys." And, you know, get some feedback that way.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Also, just like a kind of tutorial where you have kind of like a shadow showing you what you should do for specific build orders. So it's basically just running you down through the most important basic build orders for each race. And you can just kind of follow like a shadow that's kind of doing what you're supposed to do in the right timing. And then, yeah, obviously you can't do the whole game. Like, you can just show the basic build order and then you can give them kind of like a bunch of different options that you have to adapt on based on what the opponent is doing. So Warcraft is so complex that it's impossible to line out a whole game, of course. But especially the early game build orders, if there would be a tutorial that would show them what to do in what situation and just give them a bit of background, I think. If they would have done that for Reforged, that would have been amazing. And also not fuck up on the ladder and missing profiles and removing Frozen Throne and all of that. So I think that one combination would have resulted in a big increase of new players that are motivated and stay in the game. Because now I feel like we had a bunch of big streamers. They have like 20,000 live viewers, you know, they just check out the campaign. And then after the campaign is done, they're kind of not motivated because they know they will get crushed in ladder. They're not on the level to compete in multiplayer. And then they disappear again, but at least they show the game to a lot of new people, a great new audience. And these guys might have been really interested. But then they log into Reforged, probably can't even find a game, have loading bugs. And then like, everything is kind of like going wrong. But so just imagine the situation where they would have had like, all of these things smoothed out. And on top of that, a tutorial, I think we would have seen like, a huge, huge increase of the community now. It's still increasing, but just small steps basically.
Yeah, I mean, something like Dota 2 has, I don't know if you guys played Dota 2, but they have a really good beginner system where there's like missions and they teach you every aspect about the game. If Blizzard could like make something like that, yeah, I think it would be amazing. Like, okay, like, this is how you should surround, attack, moving, you know, stuff like that. Like, teaching you all the small tips and tricks.
Make keeper in my sense.
And massive guts, 100 of them. But yeah, I think that'd be really good, but honestly, man, like, I don't think Blizzard would take the time to do that. The way things have been looking so far. So we might have to like take it upon ourselves to like design, like, I heard you say, like some custom games.
So here's another idea, and again, I'm not reinventing the wheel. I'm just spitting things out that have existed in the past. Blizzard did this with Hearthstone where within the B-Nut Launcher, they featured streamers. So I don't know about you guys, but I know some really good Warcraft streamers that could be featured in the B-Nut Launcher, where people could go and say like, "Let's say you open up the B-Nut Launcher at any given time, they could feature four streamers. One for each race, you click on it, it opens up Twitch and you can ask that person questions." So.
I think it should be just Grubby, he plays four races anyway.
But no, seriously, I think that's a great way to, number one, it's growing the community. It's increasing viewership of the game. It's gonna help the lower-level players like get the information that they need. And Blizzard doesn't have to do jack shit to actually make that happen. All they have to do is incorporate the streams into the B-Nut Launcher. Now, I know that's asking a lot and they'd have to like do anything, but it's nothing they haven't done before. I know they did it for Hearthstone. When they were trying to get Hearthstone up, it was like, you opened up the B-Net app and boom, there was like, whoever it was, it was like Trump SC was featured all the time. And I forget a couple other guys, but you would open up the launcher and boom, there was a couple streamers. You could click on it, you could go ask them some questions, you could watch like, what high-level Hearthstone play looks like. Do the same thing for Warcraft, it would help everyone.
Yeah, I think Blizzard has a lot of resources actually that they could use, but they just don't. I don't know why. But yeah, for beginners, it's really hard to say like what they could actually improve to, I don't know, bring them into the game. Like Taker already said, the game is so complex. I think at some point, these people really need to be interested into the game, enthusiastic and really need to learn and want to learn the game. So yeah, I'm just kind of agreeing to like what you've guys already said. But I don't really think there are like too many resources, ways to implement these things, you know? It's quite hard.
Okay, let's move on to topic number two, which is DreamHack Anaheim coming up this weekend. And there was a big list of invited players that was released. And if we have a look at Liquipedia, so there is from Europe, Hawk, Thalzane, Happy and Foggy. From NA, Hitman. And then from Korea, we got Focus, Lolite and Moon. Sadly, the initial invites, some of them couldn't come through because of the travel ban on China. So TH and Romantic, I think it was, and also Lin, because even though he's Korean, he lives in China, are unable to come. There is also some other players listed on the Liquipedia that are not invites, but we know are going, which is Flame, Sosoriman, Anti, Neutron, Ark and OC. So actually, I'm very much looking forward to meeting everybody there. But what do you guys think about this tournament in terms of like, let's say, you look at the invites and you look at these guys, who are you feeling like is gonna be able to do well? And like, what do you expect out of this tournament in general, Crota?
Well, I'm just excited to see that we're talking about, you know, a Warcraft III tournament here in 2020. And there actually seems to be a lot of buzz about it. But I would be absolutely dumbfounded if one of the invited players didn't win it all. If there's some like hidden gem of some, you know, bring my.
Oh, OC's right there, man.
No. Well, the present company excluded. But yeah, like, I think we're all really, really wanna see how much support Blizzard's putting into this. I think we know that Blizzard is funding part of the prize pool here. Blizzard is trying to make Warcraft III an esports as they have with Overwatch. They're hopefully not gonna leave it to the wayside like they did with Heroes. And we're really, I think this is gonna be a time for Blizzard to show up and basically say, "We are fully supporting you." I mean, it's in Anaheim. I mean, it's literally 15 minutes away from Blizzard headquarters. If there isn't a Blizzard presence there, then I'm gonna be shocked. And I'm really cautious about what Warcraft III has, you know, for the next three years, since that's how long they've bankrolled this for. So what my eyes are gonna be on, not the players, I know the players are gonna play really well, but how Blizzard shows up to say, "You know what, we're here to support you."
Is the viewership important to you or in terms of like numbers, we get online audience that we get there alive?
See, like, I don't, I'm sorry, like, it's gonna be North America. North America Warcraft III scene, you know, Lado, you can vouch on this. It's really like, it's not Europe, it's not Asia. I don't expect a crowd, a large audience to be there. Like, yeah, I purposely flew to Anaheim just to watch Warcraft III. And since all of the streaming times are gonna be in America, I do wonder if we're gonna see larger than normal, larger than normal viewership. Are we gonna see more than a standard Back to Warcraft cast, you know, on their normal tournaments? Are we gonna see, you know, more than 10,000 viewers? That would be awesome. And I think it would actually be more to the Blizzard execs to see like, yeah, we're gonna continue to push this. But I wanna see Blizzard come first. I wanna see a Blizzard presence. I wanna see Blizzard showing us that they care about Warcraft III Reforged after a somewhat shaky launch.
Who wants to go next, OC?
I usually be going after Taker, alright. So as a player, I think, like, we've all been talking about the tournament. Nobody really knows like the format, like, is there gonna be vetos? Or admins picking the maps? We don't know the full player list, only the invited people mostly. So I would like to see that out there so we can prepare for that, for the situation we're gonna get. As far as like players, like, it's honestly, I mean, let's be real, it's gonna be Happy and Moon, they're top two. And I put Lolite as a wild card. Lolite's been, he's been dominating lately and he could easily take first place. So those would be my choices right there. But honestly, I wanna see more tournament information. Like, all we know is it's gonna be rounds of groups and that's it, that's all we know.
Just see in the top two of your group, it's gonna be four-player groups. You have to play, from what I understand of the rules and how I'm interpreting the rules, which matters a lot, it is gonna be just try to be in the top two of your group and then it will, then the groups will be reseeded again and again. That's how I've, how I've read it. For those of you guys who don't know, who don't follow me, I'm one of the tournament directors for DreamHack Anaheim. I wanted to be a caster, but I knew I wanted to be involved, so I threw in my hat, volunteered, bugged the people at DreamHack and they're like, "Who are you? Oh, okay, yeah, you're interested in Warcraft III? Oh, good, we don't have anyone there yet, yeah, you can go ahead and take that." So that's how I got involved. Lado, you could have done that, gone that route as well.
You'll be doomed if Lado did it.
We need somebody to clean actually the caster's area, Lado, so if you.
More coffee, more coffee, Todd?
So Lado, what do you think about Anaheim, like, in terms of like your favorites and also viewership and all that?
So player-wise, I think Happy's gonna be the player to beat. I actually think Happy will be, I think Happy has been more dominant than Moon recently. I agree with OC, I think it's gonna be Happy, Moon. And I think Lolite is gonna be in the top three too. I think it's hard to contest that. Those three will be the three to beat. I think that favorite, favorite has to be on Happy. He's just an, he's a machine, he plays a ton, he streams a ton, he's gonna be hard to beat. But the other players, I mean, it's not gonna be out of question for like, I could see Focus taking games off Happy and potentially knocking him out early. I think a Focus upset is very possible. I really wish Lin was going. If Lin was going, Lin would be the favorite to knock Happy out. But aside from that, it's, I don't really see anyone on that list that is gonna have a very strong favorable matchup against Happy. But that's still gonna make it fun to watch, because I've mentioned this one I cast before. Warcraft is very much so in any given Sunday kind of game where the players on that list are very capable of winning games. So it's not out of the question for Happy to lose a map here and there. And if it's a best of three, if he loses two maps, he's done, that's it. So upsets do happen, that's the reason we have these tournaments.
I mean, you beat Blade, right, in the tournaments?
I did, I beat Blade in the last Americas Cup. I don't think that was an upset though, right?
Yeah, sure.
Alright, but anyway, so that's how I feel about the people. In terms of the tournament itself, I think that the information could have gotten out in a much better way. We didn't know about the invite process until very, like, it was basically announced two months prior, which is enough time, but that's plenty of time to hold qualifiers, which is the way we initially thought the invites were going to be selected. And that didn't happen, which was, you know, when things don't go the way that you're expecting them to go, it makes you lose faith in the tournament and the organization as a whole. So you never wanna see that happen prior to the tournament actually taking place. So right off the bat, they were kind of starting off behind the eight ball. And then just leading up to it, just the information was, it's not there. And as OC was saying, we still don't really know the format of the tournament and it's two days away. Like, there's people who have committed, like, for most American players, it's costing anywhere from like 750 to like 12, 1300 to get there, stay there, pay the tournament fees and everything and play in this tournament. And if I was a player, I'd be pissed off, to be honest, because I'm going to a tournament paying $1,000 to play in this tournament and I still don't even know what the rules are of the tournament. I mean, that's, in my mind, that's a little, that's a little bit insane. The rule list and everything should have been devolved. Uh, the, the, the rule list and everything should have been divulged to the community. Basically as soon as the tournament was announced. Even, even if you're not 100%. Get the, get the information out there just so that the players can have time to absorb it. Cause as it stands right now, it's like the players are gonna land in Anaheim and then they're gonna be handed like a rulebook. And they're gonna be like, here you go, read this. You play in an hour. Good luck.
It's fair to say we can expect standard map pool and standard map veto process to be.
But in terms of like, uh, the way the groups, the seedings, um, the actual elimination process, the, I, I, I agree, like the maps and vetoes, that is all pretty much standardized at this point, but. Um, it, it's all that other stuff. And so I, I think the information could have gotten out there a little bit better. Now, that being said, let's focus on the positives. I think, I think it's not out of the question at all for this tournament to draw uh, 10,000 people for the, in terms of viewership. I think America or not, I know everyone always puts America in dumpster tier as far as Warcraft goes. But it's, it's a, it's a live tournament that has a $25,000 prize pool and the players are coming from all over the place, especially the invites. Um, you know, we, we have players from Europe, we have players from Asia, we have uh, you know, the strongest American players, one of which featured on this, on this cast right now. Um, so there's, e- even though it is, the tournament is in America, that I don't think, I know people keep, keep saying that as like a negative thing. I don't think that's a negative thing at all. It's a live Warcraft tournament. That is, has a $25,000 prize pool. I think 10,000 viewers, I think anything less than 10,000 viewers would be um, would be seen as a failure. For, for the tournament as a whole. So I, I really hope for the community's sake that it draws more than that. Um, I, I always relate Warcraft to like the Smash Brothers community and in terms of, cause it kind of, Warcraft really does, I know it's still. For the most part, an online community, but it still feels like a grassroots community. The large majority of us have been here since. For 15 years or so and we all know each other and it's like, you know, it, it really is a great community. If you ever turn on my stream, you'll hear me rave about how great this community is. But um, in terms of Smash Brothers, the Smash Brothers tournaments, they get like 50,000 viewers and for finals, it like bumps up to 100,000 viewers. So I'm not saying that Warcraft is at that point right now, but I think that's a point that we can get to. If this tournament goes well. Someone else was saying earlier that this is really the, the time for Blizzard to show up. So I think. While the tournament isn't really starting off in the best place in terms of knowing the invites and having the rules and everything, it's like starting basically tomorrow. It's time for Blizzard to show up. Like we need to see, are they backing the esports for Warcraft III? Like what is the production value gonna look like? Um, what is, you know, it, it's basically, it's time for them to show up. And uh, if they don't show up, it's gonna be a disappointing year, I think. In terms of the esports of Warcraft, because this is, this is also kind of the stepping stone for. The other ESL tournaments that are, you know, the other DreamHack tournaments that are gonna be happening. So whatever happens at this one, we can kind of expect that to repeat again in Europe and again in Asia and then again for the finals.
So that smash comparison to come into play, I feel like we're gonna start, we're gonna have to start saying dumpstered and body bagged a whole lot more in Warcraft III, which we don't so far and. And I'm fine with. Uh, Juan, your thoughts?
Uh, I think it's a good sign that we have actually Dreamhack as a, as an event who's trying to organize all of these things. I've been watching uh. A lot of other events in the past from them, for example, CS:GO as well, and I do really think they have a really high production value. So I'm not actually worried about that, but uh, since we were already talking about um, the rule sets and stuff like that, it still feels like that it's not really prepared at all and I'm. Definitely interested to hear from at least Enter when he's there, uh, what it's gonna look like when he's playing. So.
It's one contra group like usual.
Yeah, for, actually. Um, but yeah, but I think if we're talking about players, it, it would actually be a big surprise, at least to me, if uh, none of these invites will win the tournament in the end. I'm not too sure about Moon. I think we haven't seen much of him lately, nor of Lin, for some reasons, like we never really see both of them in the Netties ladder for some reason. I don't know why. It also felt like that these are the only two Asia from the top five scene that barely played ladder at all, but at the same time, they somehow. Managed to get quite good achievements lately, especially for Lin. Um, but yeah, I do think that Happy is probably somewhere in the top three, if not actually taking it in the end. Um, but yeah, when it goes for Europe, I'm definitely rooting for Happy. Also looking forward to Thalzane and Enter.
What about Enter?
I mean, first event for him for Mouzports, quite a pressure for him, I guess, right? So. Uh, he definitely has to make it at least into the top 16.
Take her.
Yeah, I also think, uh, first of all, it's amazing that we have ESL and Dreamhack on board. I think that's like. The most uh, amazing thing that came out of Reforged, even though Blizzard messed up a lot of things, but having these guys on board, that's like a really big deal. Um, one, one of the things I'm really looking forward to, oh, Todd is leaving the room. It's so exciting. Um, one of the most uh, thing, like the things that I'm most looking forward to is um, for instance, having a host. We never had a tournament with a professional host leading through the. Yeah, through the show basically. Um, I think that's gonna be really amazing. And um, yeah, we talked about the players, uh, Happy and uh, Moon are probably, as everyone knows, the, the big favorites. I'm rooting for Focus because I like to see Orc games, so I hope he will uh. Get at least into the semifinals. That would be awesome. And you never really know what's happening with Focus online. He's a beast offline. He's struggling, but. Yeah, it's, it's kind of hard to tell right now because we, we barely had any um, tournaments in Asia, so um. We don't really know exactly how good everyone is uh, in terms of um, serious games, because you have on, on, on the one side, you have the ladder and on the other side, you have uh. Yeah, important tournaments and especially offline events. So it's always a, a two pairs of uh. Um, like uh, two different scenarios. So we don't really know how they're um, gonna do in the offline event. And um, yeah, um, Crota, you mentioned that Blizzard is so close to the event. Um, I was actually wondering. Um, do you think they might release a patch just before? Because um, I thought they would get a patch out. They had like a, a scheduled maintenance last Friday, but no patch was released sadly. Um, so I really hope that they will get a patch out that will at least increase the, yeah, the viewability issue and maybe address the bugs, you know, um. But time's running out. We've got two days left, so you better get over there and help them a bit.
No, no, I, I've tried to get in before. They've stopped me at the gate, so.
What, what do you guys think about uh, NA's chances? Where in North America, they got home field advantage, I guess Hitman and OC is like. The two frontrunners to uh, put on a good performance since Cruncher is not there, but there is also a. Ark in the tournament, we got Flame. What do you think of NA's chances? Let's go with uh, Juan and Taker first.
Um, yeah, so I will start.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, yeah, so I think Hitman definitely has probably the best chances here in this tournament. It's al- always up to the groups as well. And I'm not sure like how good he is actually offline. I think he has a few experience from Sakraft II back then. So it's definitely not his first offline event that will probably play in his cards. Um, but I'm not so sure in general if they will actually make it out of the top 16. I don't know. Like it's definitely up to the groups. Maybe they will be lucky, maybe not. Maybe they will have a good day, maybe a bad day. It really depends on a lot of things in my opinion. But it would be pretty nice to see that at least one of these uh, NA guys will make it maybe even further than top 16.
Yeah, top 16 should be achievable, right? Um, we, how many players do we have overall now confirmed? It's just like 16 actually, right? Like 16 known players. The rest is kind of like a white card. We don't really know. If somebody will show up and he's just not making it yet.
I think Incinerator is going. I don't know if he's playing, but I'm pretty sure he's going, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know how this data was collected, but yeah.
Yeah. I think um, yeah, Hitman seems to be in a pretty good shape now and OC as well, obviously. Uh, I think. You both have a chance for sure to, let's say, get to top eight. Um, the rest. To be honest, I don't think they will get too far, but that's just my opinion. But the, the problem is I'm also like, let's say uh, Flame or Ark, I don't really have too much insights of their current skill level because. I don't really see them in the cups or any other competition, so I, I practically didn't see any games, so I really. Can't tell. Maybe they practice like Cal and there will be a surprise, which would be awesome. Um, people always like to root for the underdog. Um, so let's hope that somebody will. Kind of surprise everyone and knock out maybe one or two favorites, but at some point, obviously, um, they will not make it to the final. I think that's for sure.
Um, as far as NA players, um, I think Hitman is the one leading the group. Um, the guy played 600 million Netties games this year. He's gotten pretty damn good at this game, I can say. Um. Honestly, if, if he doesn't get like, I say two humans in his group for the round of 16, I think he can make it past round of 16. Because right now Human is his big, biggest weakness by far. Um, as far as me, I would say I'm the second best from the player pool. Um, anything less than top 16 will be a disappointment for me. I expect to at least make top 16, but again, who knows how seeding is gonna go. Hopefully it's fair. And Coward on your.
I, I'm trying, I'm trying. I'll, I'll see what they give me.
Other than that, I, I think Ark should make top 16 too. We'll see. But uh, anyone else? Sorry, guys. I don't think.
I think you guys are sleeping on Flame. Flame has been grinding Netties. I see him in the chat right now. Now, I'm not saying he's going top four. But I, I could see Flame getting top 16. Uh, he would have to make it out of his group and it, it would be an upset. But I could potentially see Flame making it out of his uh, his initial group. Um, and then like OC said, Hit, obviously Hitman is number one. OC, OC, you're probably number two on this list. Um, and then Ark and Flame are kind of similar in skill levels, so I could also see Ark getting out of his thing, out of his group. I know SSM is going because he lives in California. Um, so, and he teaches and he's, he's working full time, but he's going because he lives there. So. Sorry, I love SSM. I love you, man, but uh, I don't see you making it out of your group. Um, one thing to note about Hitman is I matched him on the Reforged ladder the other day. And you know, as I mentioned, there's all these third party programs and W3 booster pops up. And his stats, he has like, he has almost a thousand games played on Reforged already. Now, I feel like I've been playing it a good bit and I have like 300 games played. He, the fact that he has three times the games that I've, that I have, and I feel like I've been playing a good bit. Oh my, like, the man grinds. The other thing about Hitman is he's been grinding Night Elf. He's not playing Orc on Reforged. So he's uh, he also does, unless he plans on playing Elf at, at DreamHack, which I don't expect. I'm not really sure how much. Or how good his practice actually is. Now. You know, Warcraft is, is the kind of game where it is kinda like riding a bike. You don't, you don't really forget it, but there is definitely being in shape versus out of shape. And I'm not sure how good of shape Hitman is gonna be in, because he has a thousand Elf games played in the last week. So.
Do you think he's switching race? Or do you think he's just trying to figure out health a little bit more because he struggled against Elf? Like I remember he had a few choice words for elegant or something, when he.
Yeah, he, he actually, Hitman hates Talons. He, Hitman is, is really strong at playing the exact meta. Like when everything goes according to plan, Hitman is super duper strong. If he sees anything that he doesn't expect, that's really his weakness. And with Tal, you know, Talons 10 years ago, that was, that was, that was the go-to strategy for Elf against Orc for the last 10 years. And then all of a sudden, that patch hit and. Let's not talk about that, but um, basically Talons fell out of favor for the last year and a half or so, which is basically when Hitman started playing Warcraft. He, I mean, he's relatively new to the scene. And uh, yeah, so anytime he sees Talons, he kind of doesn't know what to do. Now, I don't wanna tell, I don't wanna say he doesn't know what to do, but. He, he definitely, you can tell he's out of his comfort zone when he's playing against those less traditional strategies that we haven't seen in the last two years. So. Um, yeah, I don't, I think Hitman is the strongest, but he's definitely not without his flaws.
Uh, what do you guys think about, you know, there's been some discussion on. It seems like a lot of good players or players that you would have expected to be there from NA are not there. So you know, like Cruncher is one of those names, Insepro sadly won't be there either. Lotto's not there, like. Uh, but like, these are like just three names of like, what it seems is like many, many names of, I guess for some of them, we're not sure where they're, they are going, but I'm under the impression like it's. There's gonna be quite a few people missing. So Crota, what, what are your thoughts on this?
I, I think, I, I think a lot of the NA players, it, it's just cost prohibitive. Like, it's in, first of all, it was announced a little bit late. It's like, you know, two, two months out. And a- as OC said, it's costing over like north of $1,250 to even get in. I- if you are going to this event, it's either because it's local. Or you, you wanna be at the grassroots, at the, at the start, at the spark. Of this whole entire, you know, like esports taking over Warcraft III again. Uh, I'm really hoping that. I, I'm really hoping that something comes of this and all of a sudden, North America, this, this presence and. This event makes it back on the map. That's, that's really what I'm looking for. I'm, I think a lot of people have this whole entire wait and see. Atmosphere with Blizzard and I'll go back to that again, waiting to see, uh, are we really finally gonna get the support after. Being the ugly stepchild for 17 years? Is this really happening? Or, or are you just gonna like. Is, is, you know, is it gonna be past midnight and the curtains already closed? I think, I think a lot of people just like are hoping. But people have been, I guess, disappointed by Blizzard recently, so they're, they're unsure.
OC.
Um, so, so I can speak for Cruncher. Um, he couldn't go because of schooling mostly. Uh, he also wasn't invited, so there's like, you have that on top of that, like, okay, school. When I pay a thousand dollars on top of that while missing out on school, it just wasn't worth it for him. Um, I think then ends up, um. He decided to go like a little too late and at that point he realized his ID was expired. And it, it just, by the time it got approved, he wouldn't be able to fly out, so he couldn't go. The other top American would be HTRT. And uh, I, this entire year, I don't know what's happened to him. He just like stopped playing tournaments in leagues, like. He's labeled as the ultimate Dodger of 2K19, so. He's a really good player, does some really fun strats. Honestly, he's my favorite player to observe. Cause he does insane stuff like Beastmaster and Human Mirror, like you never see that. He somehow beats like top players. But um, as far as like other people, I don't really know why it didn't go.
Lotto?
Uh, yeah, the.
Keep it short.
Basically, the top player, the only American players who um. Who really have a good shot at making the top 16, we already talked about, and they all have those kind of personal reasons as to why they couldn't go. And essentially, if you don't have a shot at the top 16, you're paying a thousand dollars for an experience to go. Play video games for a weekend, when essentially you can have the same experience playing, you know, the, the cups that. That you do online and you can do it in the comforts of your own home. Now, I understand having the in, in-person experience of going to the tournament, it's a lot of fun. The question is. How many people really have a thousand bucks to throw at a weekend, you know? Uh, I, for, speaking about myself, I, I know we're talking about like individual personal reasons. I, I have a son being born in eight weeks. So throwing a thousand dollars at a video game tournament when I'm about to be a dad seems a little bit unreasonable. Um, yeah, so that, that's my personal reason, but there, you know, everyone has their own reasons.
But um, so it feels like if this kind of tournament happens in Europe. I'd feel like there, there'd be more enthusiasm, but maybe it's like, you know, I don't take all the parameters, you know, in consideration, where like the costs are probably gonna be lower if we have like a tournament in Germany or something. But I feel like. If we're involved in Warcraft III as much as we are, like yourselves included, Lotto, like I feel like for most of us, if there is a tournament like this. In the country where we live, I just feel like for a lot of people, in my mind, like the entire NA scene was gonna be there when this tournament got announced. So I was definitely like very surprised. So. You bring up like a valid point, of course, like you have a. You, you're gonna have a newborn child, but at the same time, like, don't you think that by not going, you're gonna have some like regrets later on, thinking, oh, like that was the one tournament in North America that I could, could have gone to and I didn't go to or?
I, my, when, as soon as this was announced, my, my thought was if I can go in person and cast it, I would go. And I tried really hard to get one of the casting positions and it didn't happen. So. Uh, because I, I knew I wasn't gonna cast it and I'm, I'm very realistic. There's a slim chance of me making the top 16 with that invite list. Um, it's, yeah, it just wasn't worth it for me personally. Now, that, you know, that's, I live on the east coast, it's on the west coast. A, a lot of people don't realize. How big America is and how much it actually costs, but in general, those plane tickets are about four to $500 to cross the country. And then on top of that, you have hotels, which usually start at about 200 a night and then transportation and food. Um, yeah, you're, you're usually looking at spending, plus the DreamHack ticket itself, you're usually looking at spending over a thousand dollars to, to get there and play.
On, on that topic, maybe as a former full-time traveler, I, I just wanna throw in some stuff there. Um, because the thousand dollars, I was actually wondering because everyone is kind of saying it costs a thousand dollars. But I think, um, with like a little bit of, um, yeah, adventurous spirit, you could reduce the cost a lot, you could, uh, do couch surfing, you could just crash in.
Y'all ever heard of hitchhiking?
You can hitchhike if you really want to and you have the time, I'm sure that would be a much, much cheaper way to get there. Um, even just the flight seems very expensive to me, but I trust you on that because I didn't really check it. But the accommodation, I think you could handle. Uh, Couchsurfing is a great platform or just crashing into his room, you know, I'm sure he will not kick you off. They, they all have double rooms. Um, I'm pretty sure you could have arranged at least accommodation. So that's, um, yeah, maybe half an excuse. I also agreed with Todd that, um, the excitement in the NA scene is maybe a bit less than in Europe, but that's also because the European scene is just much, much bigger. And you know, the snowball effect, it's just everyone's talking about and NA, you have these couple of good players that can actually compete. Um, and also the, the amount of people watching is probably much lower. So it's a bit harder to get excited for it. Um, but for the fact that it's in America, I would have, I would have thought, but we don't know yet, we don't know who will actually show up, right? It's, it's just unofficial lists, so.
Yeah.
I would say let's judge it after the event and see how big the crowd is, how excited are, are the people there? Maybe everything will be amazing and I'm sure online we will have, um, new records, I'm pretty sure about that because the, the European people, it's a good time for them to watch, uh, in the US time zone, basically. So I'm expecting quite a big, um, yeah, count and on Twitch, or Crota, you wanna say something?
Yeah, no, see like, what I wanna say here is like Warcraft, Warcraft is an old game, right? It came out in two thousand and two. And I, I don't know, I can't speak for the average age of the average Warcraft III fan, but we're talking about Lado who, you know, he, he's, he's gonna be a father in eight weeks. I, I'm a father of three, it's the whole entire idea of couch surfing as like someone turning forty. That's like, no, 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 I'm, I'm not doing that, right? So like, like I, I don't think you have that young adventure, like the young adventurous spirit is generally for the young, like that, that twenty-one to twenty-eight-year-old, yes, I, I'm gonna go there, I'm gonna make ends meet. I'm, I, this is a place that I wanna be. Ten years ago, yeah, we, I think we would definitely have that, there would still be that North American and community that's willing to do that. But now people are like, no, 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 I, I got, I got jobs, I got a mortgage, I, um, you know, my, my wife, my kids. And I, I think that's, they, they haven't attracted new North American fans enough. I think that's really what, what Blizzard needs to do in order to have that young adventurous spirit that you were talking about.
That's fair point, yep. I think I, I still, I just stayed young because I'm still doing it, I'm thirty-five now and I'll.
We, we all think we stayed young, we did not stay young. You look back sixteen years, you can see the wrinkles, you can see the change.
I don't know what you're talking about, I'm just as immature as I was when. Uh, one, Europeans have more passion than NA.
Yeah, I think it has also become like quite a doom loop for NA in general because I think it all started like a couple of years ago with the WGL when, um, the Americans got like basically only one slot now. I think it was like two before, right? So everyone was like from the NA, like where do we get only one slot, why not two? So now there's an opportunity, I think, for NA to represent themselves again, to show that they're actually quite worth, I would say, compared to the Europeans that usually get more invited to these bigger tournaments. But then you see the lack of enthusiasm in front or in towards to these tournaments, which is quite sad, I think. I mean, in, back in August, like last year, I also traveled to Moscow just for the experience. I could have, uh, told my team back then Oceanist to pay these, uh, costs to get to Moscow, but I didn't really do so because I think or thought that, uh, it's a one-time life experience for me and it's really nice to see all these players from back in the days from the CIS region.
And how much was it?
I think, I, I think I paid like five hundred and shared the room with Enter and back then MTW paid the hotel, so it was basically free for me.
Lucky you.
Yeah. Um, but I think I paid like somewhere around four hundred fifty, five hundred, so I think it was like quite okay to invest that. Also compared that tournament back then, the Funny Warcraft III Cup in August, wasn't even worth it basically to go there. Like I think I had a pretty bad luck with the grid in the end, like I dropped to the lower bracket, lost to Enter and met Foggy two rounds later and ended up getting thirty-four dollars or something, so it wasn't worth it at all, right? But in the end, but like in the end, it's a one life, it's like a lifetime experience that I'm not gonna forget. Like I met SDMK and Quai, like former undeads from back in the, way, way back in the days that I actually cherished a long time ago. Um, I met Foggy, Cash, Hawk, we went out and ate pizza and ate pizza and stuff like, you know, it's stuff that I'm not gonna forget and it's quite sad that all these Americans are like, yeah, well, you know, it's ah, eight hundred bucks, I'm not gonna go there, it's way too far for me, I don't wanna travel ten hours and stuff, like come on, it's, it's a weekend, it's a tournament. You will have fun, even if you're probably paying five hundred dollars. I think there are worse situations where you could possibly spend five hundred dollars. I mean, most of us has been probably spending many, many years now into this game. Like I don't really think that any of us has been spending less than ten years maybe. Like we are all veterans, I would probably think that has been spending so many years into this game now. So it's really cool to meet all of these personalities and it's at least for me, worth it to take all this money and go there.
Uh, all right, thank you very much, guys, let's move on to the next topic. It's the weekly cups that take place, uh, every weekends. So on Fridays, Redmore Cup is no more, so last Friday sadly there was not one of them. But we still did have the Rising Star Cup, that was the eleventh one that took place and big surprise. Happy one. And we had, we had actually three undeads in top four. Uh, Happyface Vortex in the finals, which is very nice to see this returning name. Uh, Ente took third and then Cash, oh, third and fourth, Ente and Cash, yeah, they lost in semifinals. Were you guys able to catch some of the games and what do you think about the tournament? I guess one, you, you follow this probably?
Yeah, I gotta just remember all of these games. Um, yeah, Vortex, I think it was kind of surprising, I think he won against Cash, right, in the summer finals two zero?
Yeah.
Um, yeah. Yeah, I think it was quite, uh, uh, I think it was quite surprising to me that he actually won Cash. I do remember that he was back, uh, back then really strong against Orcs. I've heard from a couple of Europeans, uh, such as Spiral, that they were always fearing this guy back then. He crept fast level three ledge and then just pushed on like forty-seven supply and a lot of people are just like, didn't know what to do. Um, but I think it's a really nice name or a back old name to see back in the scene. I'm not sure like what's up with Vortex in the near future for this game because I think we've seen him a couple of times already playing this game, I think he played some netease already a year ago and then he for some reason stopped. Since we do not really know what's happening with these Spanish guys, uh, it would be great to see them continuing to play this game, I'm not sure about Luciferon, all I've heard is that he's not playing the game anymore again. Um, yeah, in general, happy winning a cup isn't a really big surprise anymore, obviously, but it's definitely a surprise to see at least Vortex and, uh, actually even Enter at some point there because the grid was actually quite stacked, I think. But Enter also has been improving lately, I have to say, and looking really forward to, uh, have more undeads, undeads in the top three.
Yeah, if we look at the bottom of the Liquipedia page, there's the final brackets and then we see the top eights. It's, uh, Happy, Neutron, Ente, Side, Foggy, Cash, Hawk and Vortex. I feel like this, this weekend or weekly tournaments that happen on the weekend are just so interesting. Like Rising Star Cup is quickly becoming one of the most popular, I think, tournaments for people to play and follow. There was finally, uh, Back to Warcraft broke the two hundred-plus entrance in the tournament, which in my opinion is huge because it shows like really, really, really big growth. Uh, so, yeah, personally, I'm very hyped about, about this tournament and about, and about what's happening with it. Uh, Crota, were you able to catch some of it or like, do you have anything to say maybe about Happy's dominance in these tournaments?
Well, I, I just say that it's ironic that Rising Star Cup is being won by Happy, he's, he's no rising star, like, like, I, I was like, I was like, oh, this is for like new players who are trying to get him like happy one, hap- okay. But, you know, hats off to him, the practice is really showing, he's doing, he's doing a really good job. Um, Ente makes fun of him on his stream all the time, like, yeah, he, he doesn't know what a girl is, so that's why he's winning every single, every single tournament. Uh, but, uh, yeah, it's, um, I'm just, I just like the fact that people are like dipping their toe in the water, just trying to see what it, what it's like. And like, like the stories that are coming out, like I, I can imagine some guy in the first round go, oh my gosh, I got paired up with Happy, they're like, oh, what happened? I got completely killed, this is how we did it. And, and this is how that excitement from grassroots really take off. Um, I'm really happy to see Rising Star just really take that place, um, from, you know, I remember years ago, it was like you were just always excited to see the Zotac Cup and what was happening and following that and seeing reoccurring names and having that same level of excitement about the Rising Star Cups going, yeah, there was great results last week, what's gonna happen this week, let's do it again and, and, and keep on doing it again and hopefully we'll get up to like, you know, Rising Star Cup three hundred and five and we'll be thinking back to how there's only, yeah. Like there's only, there's only four hundred players this time, right? Like it, it's, it's on a good spot, it's in the upwards direction. The energy is there, the excitement is there, like all throughout today, I was looking at the streamers, the casters. Everyone had a smile on their face, Dreamhack is on everyone's mind. And I really want to, like, everyone's hope is something big comes of this.
Um, so as far as the tournaments, unfortunately, like they start like two hours before I go to bed. Uh, besides now, because I'm adjusting my schedule to a daytime schedule, which.
Check your passion, OC.
But, um, I, I, I do honestly love the cups, man, there's a lot of good matchups every single weekend. I, I've checked out some of the replays, I mean, unfortunately Happy wins every damn time. But, um, honestly, uh, Cash, didn't Cash actually beat Happy last week? He was the first person to knock him out.
Yeah. I think in, in the ninth cup, I think it was.
Yeah. So he's, he's starting to get some pressure towards him. But, uh, honestly, I love, I love the tournaments, like we had what, two hundred and fifty people? That's, that's nuts. It's nowhere like the N-Cup and Zeta Cup days, but we're getting there. Believe it or believe it.
Yeah, also think it's a really nice, uh, um, yeah, kind of like a regular thing that we have again because you always know, oh, it's Sunday, it's gonna be a cup. Now we basically had a cup Friday, Saturday, Sunday, sadly Redmore decided to drop down from the list, but it was maybe also a little bit too many cups. I think two cups on the weekend is, is enough. Um, maybe just work on these cups and, and try to improve them, maybe put some more price money and divide it into the top three or even down to the top five, so people other than Happy can also have a bigger motivation. Um, I noticed the ESL Cup is providing, like they're basically giving all the money for the first place and the second place doesn't get anything at all. So I could imagine that that's a little bit discouraging. People will still play because of the fact that, um, well, if you're like, uh, really like someone who's just playing for fun, you can play against one of your idols. And like, you can't really think of that in any other sport, like imagine you go play football on the pitch and you're like, oh, cool, today I play with Messi. Um, so I think that's a really cool thing about our small community that it's actually, the, the stars are really there to touch, basically, you know, you can talk to them in the chat, you can play them. Uh, you can always follow them on their streams and interact with them, so. And I think the cups really helped to build that community and get everyone a bit closer together. Um, so yeah, I'm, I'm also really happy, I'm, I'm watching as much as I can, you know, I can't follow every cup, every game, but usually I try to follow the, the semifinals and forward and then watch the, the highlight BODs. Uh, that's also pretty cool that we have people in the community that take their time to kind of put together the highlights, um, in case you couldn't watch it live. So all in all, um, super nice, super nice.
Lado.
Uh, yeah, they're fantastic for the community. I'm, I'm gonna echo Taker's thoughts a little bit here, but if anything that's good for the community is good. And, uh, what we've seen over the last eleven Rising Star Cups is I'm pretty sure every single cup has had more entrance than the week prior, which is such a good thing to see. It shows that people are, um, are basically getting off their couch and playing, so to speak, you know, no pun, no pun intended. But, you know, all, all those backseat gamers in your channel, Todd, that are telling you how to play, they're really, they're able to put it to the test and show you how it's done. So, you know, everyone who's screaming at you to go tanks against Happy, they have the opportunity, sign up for Rising Star Cup and tank Happy, go get him, you know, make some tanks and let's see it happen. So, uh, I think the other thing is, I don't think it's bad, I know everyone keeps talking about Happy continuously winning as being a bad thing. I don't see it as being a bad thing, I think it's pretty cool because he's kind of like becoming, if any of you guys watched Jeopardy, there's been like a couple contestants on Jeopardy that are like Ken Jennings, that he was like on for however many weeks. And it became a thing, like who's gonna beat Ken Jennings, like who, who's gonna do it? And it, it, in my, in my mind.
Yeah, I have no idea what you're talking about.
Me and OC, me and OC, no, it's okay.
Okay, okay, so it's, it's an American game show, it's like one of the most popular American game shows and there's this guy who won every single time, every single time, and it was like, who's gonna beat him? It's a trivia game show, but anyway, um, this, Happy is kind of becoming this, this idol of sorts that who's gonna beat him, like every week, who's gonna beat him? So I, I think it creates anticipation and anticipation is good for viewership, it's good for the community. Uh, it's good for Warcraft, so Back to Warcraft is doing a great job in terms of casting it and there's a couple other people who, who cast it as well, so, um, the, the streams are great for the community, it's a lot of fun. I, I highly, very, very strongly encourage every single person to sign up, it doesn't matter what your skill level is, even if you get knocked out in the first round, it doesn't matter, it's just a game, but get involved, it's fun, it's fun to get involved, it's, it's good to show, uh, it's a good and easy way to show your support for the game that you love.
Did you play any of the cups, uh, last weekend?
I've played, I played in Rising Star, but I got knocked out by Passion, he's a German undead player, I think.
Yeah. No, wait, is it Passion? Actually, I'm not sure.
There are like two Passions.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought.
The French Night Elf and a German undead.
Yeah, I saw this one on Liquipedia, actually, I was like, wait, isn't it French? Anyway, uh, let's talk about the ESL Open Cup number three, which was Sunday. Surprise, surprised, happy one this one too. Uh, Foggy took second, this is the finals that we see almost every single time nowadays, and then we had Hawk and Blade falling in the semifinals, so I think, yeah, the brackets should be, it's a little bit complicated, actually, this, all the way down, yeah, the bottom, so top eight was Happy in quarterfinals, bit bizarre. Hawk beat Sonic, by the way, the, the quarterfinals are best of one in this tournament, which I'm not a big fan of. Like in the previous ESL Open Cup, I remember I played Foggy and I won, and then in the next round, I think I had to play maybe like Sonic or something. And in quarter, I was convinced it was gonna be best of three, but it was best of one, so I've, I've given them the feedback that I think best of three from quarterfinals would be a lot better, that's what they do in Rising and I think that's better, so I hope that they change that eventually, but yeah. Third, uh, quarterfin- quarterfinals, Blade beat XLord and then Foggy beat Ente and then in the semi, Happy beat Hawk and Foggy beat Blades, so it was, uh, Happy Fogging finals. Did you guys catch these games and, uh, what did you think of the tournaments, one?
Yeah, I think, uh, I kinda agree to the quarterfinals, like whenever I see that, uh, the ESL Open is actually happening and there's still like best of one and quarterfinals, I'm like, what? Like why are we not making best of three? I think it's more interesting for the viewers, first of all, and as a player, it's almost always more, uh, rewarding, I think, like you don't wanna end up with a stupid one game and just drop out of the tournament, right? So I think that's the, the point where you should definitely put it at least a best of three. Um, yeah, but once again, Happy definitely showing why he's the number one uncontested, number one European player right now, making a clean three zero against Foggy in the finals. Uh, we've had actually XLord and Ente again in the quarterfinals, uh, making it quite far there. Blade is, um, I think probably one of the most rising players that we have in Europe right now. Shame that he kinda ruined it back then with that match fixing scandal. Um, but yeah, I think he definitely deserved a second chance and hopefully he's not gonna ruin it. So I'm definitely looking forward to him, maybe even on an offline event or so.
He's from Moldova, right?
Yeah, yeah, right.
Or any stories we should know about Moldova, take you.
Very good wine, maybe he was drunk on wine when he did it?
You know what's funny, you don't even know him, right?
Um, not personally, no.
Uh, but you are so on point.
Uh, OC, did you get to follow this cup?
Uh, again, not really, because it's had bad times for me, but again, I, I checked some replays, um, and again, another happy victory. Um, and I definitely agree, like every tournament, quarterfinals on should be best of three. Like that should be a standard for every single, out there easily.
It's kind of weird, by the way, because we had Back to Warcraft on the show last weekend, uh, sorry, last week. And they were saying that Humans is the best race, but I'm looking at Rising Star Cup, it's three undeads and one Orc in top four and then now the two humans died in the semifinals, so I guess.
Well.
And there must be really bad.
There's no Chinese Koreans come to that, so it's, it's hard to say that.
Uh, Crota, your thoughts?
Um, like I think, yeah, a quarterfinal should always be best of three at, at that point. um, there's a little bit of mind games in a best of three series. And if you win your first game, do you try to go for some crazy awful off the wall strategy to catch your opponent off guard? Second game, do you go for, do you know that you have better endurance? And know that if you play a long grindy match, the second game you could, and win it, you can then like win out in best three. There's, there's a lot more that you need to think about in best of three, especially at the corner final stage. I definitely agree there. Um, talks about undead being the weakest race. Um, I, yeah, I, I don't agree with that at all. Um.
I don't think they said that. I think they were saying Night Elf might be the weakest race. They were saying humans the best race.
Humans the best, okay. So I, I've heard some people say that undead's the best and that's one of the worst races. And I, like, if I have to like talk about undead, it's, it's more that there's like a lack of diversity in, in undead, like, like.
We'll talk about this later.
Oh, okay, 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 okay. All right. Okay, I'll help.
It's a joke.
All right, Taker, you take or you take it.
Yeah, I think we said, uh, we said everything here. I, I'm just a bit sorry for Foggy, to be honest, uh, losing against Happy. He really seems to have like a kind of a problem against him, like just on a mental basis. I think he's going in the game with a mindset, ah shit, I'm gonna lose. You can really, really see that in his games. Um. And I watched the final actually, and sometimes like the, usually the beginning is good, but then in the, the middle of the game, it usually turns around and then you can just see there's no chance in hell for him. And yeah, that's just a bit sad. I hope, maybe we need to get like kind of a mental coach or something for him. I'm not sure if Ivan is still around. I haven't heard from him in a long time, but he should go over there and kind of get him into like a better mindset against Happy.
Yeah. Lado?
Uh, I'm gonna disagree about the mindset thing. So I, I have two points. One is I, I actually don't mind. Um, I don't mind best of one up until the quarters. I think it's good for moving the tournament along. A lot of those early rounds are just, even if they are best of threes, they're just gonna be two o's anyway. So keeping it best of one up until the quarters, I agree. I think that's best of one is good. Um, and then once the quarterfinals hits, that's, that's when you move it to best of three. Because otherwise those tournaments, they, they drag on all day and they end up, if you are either casting it or trying to follow it all the way through, or if you're a player that's going all the way through it, you end up playing like eight hours or something. If it, if it does end up dragging on the whole time. So keeping it best of one up until the quarterfinals, I think that's a good idea. Um, and then in terms of the, the actual cup itself, um.
You mean quarterfinals included or?
No, I think quarters, it should switch to best of three. I think it's good. Cause once you get up to like that, those, those players that are making the, the, the quarters, they're usually kind of close in skill level and you get to see, um, you get to see like the differing strategies based on the map picks and vetos and um, people can adjust their gameplay based on game one and game two. So I think quarter, yeah, quarters best of three is good. Anyway. Um, as far as Happy versus Foggy, I think Foggy actually has a really good mentality. If, if you watch his stream, he's always super positive. He's very optimistic. He looks at the game in a very analytical way, which is a good way to look at the game. He doesn't look at it in terms of what is Happy doing right? He looks at the game in terms of what am I doing wrong? Which is a good attitude to have when you're trying to improve. Um, now, yeah, that, that being said, he, there's definite, Happy is just a better, there is, he's like the Achilles heel of Foggy. So, uh, he does need to change something up. He needs to do something different. I don't like when I see him go, he tries, he still tries Keeper Mass Air sometimes. It's, that shit is never gonna work against Happy. Stop trying it. Um, he's, he's gotten close with the, the mass archers thing a couple of times. I think he took a game once with like the triple hero mass archer.
But let's say this later, we're gonna, we're gonna clip this and we're gonna send it to Foggy. You're Foggy's coach right now.
Yeah.
You've got 60 seconds, you've got 60 seconds to tell him what you think he should be doing better. Go.
Watch my stream.
He's never gonna be.
I actually love Foggy. I do. And I, I've talked to Foggy a few times, uh, and I've talked to him about his games. Actually, I talked to him about learning English, because he asked me, uh, I used to be an English teacher in here. But anyway, that's, that's another thing.
60 seconds, you've already wasted 20.
No, if, if I were him, I would try, I mean, I hate to give Foggy advice. He's, he's, he's leagues above me. Um, but just trying something, trying something different from what he's already been trying. So even just staying one base, he tries to expand every single time and every single time uh, Happy pushes with like that super strong tier three 50 food army on his expand. It's almost like it's, it's a copy paste. Every single one of their games is, is almost identical. And now the game might drag on a bit, but usually the game is decided at that 50 food push. And so something else, something has to change. So I would say try and stay on one base and just match him. Um, try and do just all out hit and runs with mass triads, uh, maybe. I, I don't, I don't even know. Foggy, if you want some help, give me a call.
I would pay good money to Foggy listening to what, everything you just said and just like straight up face bombing and looking.
Foggy would love it, actually. No.
He probably tried all of these things already.
I know what his reaction would be. No, he, I think he would take it to heart. I actually think he would take it to heart. I, knowing his personality, I think he would listen. I do.
You really should have come to Anaheim. You could have coached him there. Um, all right. Let's talk about Juan, Ante and XLord's new team announcements. You guys just joined Mousesports. Congratulations.
Um, thank you.
Yeah, Juan, like anything you wanna say about it? Like was this in the works for a very long time? Were you guys actively looking for a team together? I know you guys are pretty close and always hang out together.
Um, actually, like I left Oceanus, uh, in December last year and I think it all started somewhere like a couple of weeks ago, basically. I'm not really, I can't really remember like when it all started, like XLord, Spiral, me and Ante, we usually hang out like every single day, almost every single day in Discord, like we have our own group and just talk to, uh, about the games, like tournaments and stuff. And we're also pretty close as friends. Um, so the initial thought process was from all of us that we really wanted to get into a team together. Cause we were basically teamless. We didn't really know what's up with XLord because, uh, as he has mentioned before, um, due to his work schedule, it is quite hard for him to play tournaments. I think he had like two, two months off at, uh, at May last year when he attended the Ironcouch Player Tournament. But then after that, he also said that he's gonna be busy and he made that quiet, uh, that, that retirement post on his Twitter and said, due to work overload, uh, he's not going to be able to play anymore. But it seemed like that he still has interest into the, uh, for this game. So yeah, even af- after all these tournaments, we still spoke to each other and we're, we're still in contact. So that's where it kinda slowly started, that bondship of as a, as a, as friends, you could say. Um, but yeah, I think like, I said it on Back to Warcraft before on the stream earlier, that Ante and me, we have a long history already in, uh,
Yeah.
former teams, right? XLord is, I, I've met him, uh, in May for the very first time. Uh, I was really interested like how he is. I know that, uh, you, for example, also are probably not the, the, yeah, big fan of, biggest fan of him, but still, he's a quite funny dude after all. And I still think it's, uh, definitely a fun trio, probably. But yeah, Ante in the end, uh, came to us and said, yo, what up? Uh, let's do it. Like I'm gonna make a, after Reforged got released, or I think even before, I think it was even before, uh, he made a big application letter, actually. Um, and sent it to a lot of organizations. Uh, big, uh, especially big names in the scene that are pretty much in CS:GO, League of Legends, like all the top tier games right now in, in the esports scene. And I think Mousesports actually replied at the same day when he sent that application letter already. And, uh, Jan Domenico's, uh, orga from this, uh, team who is also known as Frogbender from back in the old days at Giga. I think probably the Europeans know more about this than the NDAs, I guess. Um, yeah, he came to us or to Ante and said, yeah, well anyways, I think even if you wouldn't have sent that application letter, you, uh, we, I, or at least I would have probably reached to, uh, reached out to you guys anyways. So that was probably to, to all of us, a really good sign, because that meant that we are probably doing, uh, at least resource wise, a good job. So that we definitely left a footstep into the German scene, at least right now, or in Europe in general. Um, so yeah, we got in talks, Ante did mostly all of it, like XLord and me, we just listened to it when we were in talks together in group calls and stuff. But, uh, all of these things basically was just leaded by Ante. So it was basically just done all of him. Um, but yeah, it basically it just came step by step. It was really hard to hold these things back. Like I've been streaming regularly right now. And people were obviously asking like, what team is it? Uh, can you give us like a hint? Ante is going to, in the headquarters, so it has to be somewhere in Berlin since he's living in Berlin, or maybe it's a bigger, another big city, right? And people were already trying to figure out what kind of organization has their, uh, headquarters in these, in this town in Germany, right? So I've heard already a couple of people saying like, it's probably Mousesports and stuff, so.
So should we expect you guys to attend like a lot of events from now, like the, the other ESL Pro Tour tournaments that are gonna take place, Dreammax? Set in, uh, there's one in Jön Shopping in Sweden and in Rotterdam. Should we expect all three of you guys there?
If everything works, definitely, yeah. I think it would have been even done, even if we wouldn't have joined Mousesports, probably. I think we still would have gone there, right? Um, I'm not sure. At least I can speak for myself. I'm not quite sure about Melbourne, since Melbourne takes like 22 hours to get there and back. I don't know, man. Uh, it's actually many, many days that I need to take off from work if I'll still stick to my full-time work schedule. Um, but yeah, you can definitely at least expect us in Sweden and, uh, in the Netherlands. Definitely, yeah.
Yeah, we're seeing the tweet from, uh, Mousesports here on the stream. Uh, OC, when you saw that tweet and that announcement, what was your first thought?
My first thought, what a fucking goddamn hairy beast, Ante. Damn.
He went for it.
Nah, man, I mean. The, the great thing here is that like, congrats to XLord, Ante and Juan. Um, the greatest thing is another old school Warcraft team dipping their foot back in Warcraft. You know, we got newbie joined Warcraft last year. Now we got Mousesports. Um, who's next? You know, it's, it's, it's good news, honestly. Um, but I do have a question for Juan. Uh, W3IL, don't you guys need four players to play in that league?
That's right.
Are you scouting right now for that fourth person?
You're not undead, you, you.
There are not many, many left. Um, yeah, actually, we did consider Warcraft 3 IL to participate there. Um, we haven't really gone through all of it right now. But, uh, I think I've said it on my stream earlier, uh, like a couple of days ago already. Um, Clan Wars are definitely nice. And I think it's one of the most exciting system you could probably watch, because, uh, I don't know, there are like Clan Wars are creating an environment of exciting games that is really fun to watch as a spectator. But, um, currently, especially with the prize pool, at least, that's where I have to be honest, it doesn't really feel like spending my time at these Clan Wars, like six hours or seven hours, maybe even more sometimes at the end of a day where I just get like 50 bucks, basically. Because we have to share all the money. There is a trend following in Warcraft III lately, because there's basically no salary, where teams are getting bigger and bigger. So people are just basically playing for fun. But as long as these teams are getting bigger, or the, the teams are big in general, the more you have to basically divide the prize money. So in general, it doesn't really make a lot of sense. So at least or except if you wanna have at least some fun, obviously. But in the long term, personally for me, I just don't really see myself spending so much time at, uh, yeah, for a tournament like this for so many months, just to get like 30 bucks out of it, right?
Uh, you guys wanna add anything? Krota, Lado?
No, just congrats and sponsorship as a whole was good. And I, I've said it before, if it's good for the community, it's good for Warcraft and seeing sponsorships, sponsorships come out is, is good. So, uh, yeah, congrats to you guys. I'm, I'm glad it's happening and it, uh, it helps, like Juan was saying, it helps create like a good competitive environment for, for the game, which is, which is good. So it's, yeah, good stuff.
Yeah, from my side, maybe. I think it's just the fact that Mousesport is coming back is a great sign. Um, it probably will also result in more tournaments, especially from the ESL, because we used to have the EPS in Germany, which was like the number one, um, league for us in Germany. And then WC3L, which is basically the same, just with a bit more prize money. And that would also motivate, uh, yeah, as Man mentioned, um, players that really kind of, um, depend a little bit on the money as well. You know, they do it not just only for fun. It's, it's kind of like getting a job, basically. So they can't just play, uh, and spend hours and hours for 50 years, you know? Um, so the fact that Mousesport is coming back, um, I'm just hoping that it will kind of trigger other big organizations to have a look at it as well, because it's just gonna basically put it on the spotlight. And then, um, yeah, hopefully the ESL with Bashy will find their own, uh, kind of like old love back and pump some money into Warcraft as well, other than the ESL Pro Tour. So I'm really looking forward to like a new EPS and a, yeah, WC3L. So that would be like amazing.
Yeah.
One thing I was wondering is, um, so for this, the mouse lineup, um, because you guys are really close with, uh, Spiral, right? Or Spira.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, right.
But like, that's like, that's something I really wonder, like I, I've never met him personally, but I think that's like the case with everyone. What's going on? Like, why does he not even have a picture online? Does, does anyone know anything about that? Cause he would be the perfect fit for your team.
Yeah, uh, I mean, it's a long, long story and I don't really wanna go like into further details, because it also includes his, uh, current team right now. But, um, I do know that he attended an ESL LAN back in the days, like, uh, the ESL Pro Tour, uh, EPS actually. Like he went to, uh, there to the, to the relegations, actually. And there were a couple of pictures on, uh, Readmore, but I, I don't know, like these, these, uh, events basically occurred like 10 years ago. So just 10 years is a lot of time, man. I don't know what has happened, if he has grown a third leg or something, but, uh.
I think he went on Reddit and he saw Taker's videos, like the YouTube videos where like Taker is like, like this, like flexing. His bicep to the max. And he was like, I never wanna be that guy. So I'll never post a picture anyway, anywhere.
I hope that's not the case. I hope I'm not the reason for him not doing that.
Yeah, but I don't know, like, um, obviously we did consider him to pick up, but, uh, there were a couple of reasons why it just didn't work out in the end. And I mean, it's his decision. Uh, there's nothing that we can personally do. Uh, it's quite sad since, uh, like I said, we, I, I also know him for many, many years now. And yeah, that's how it is.
It's a shame.
Um, let's move on and let's talk about balance. Oof. Spicy. What do you guys think of the current balance?
Wait, I need to complete.
And give me your ranking of races from best to worst. So Krota, I think you have limited, limited time, so let's get you, uh, talking about this.
Damn, I should have prepared the salt already.
So like, uh, to, top two for me would be Human Undead. They're like interchangeable on, on any given Sunday for me right there. Uh, but Orc is, Orc is a close third and then Night Elf would be a little bit more count, more down the bottom right now. I, I know I'm getting strange looks, but, um, that, that's just what I'm seeing in terms of, in, in terms of the play. And, and what, what I need to do is when I look at games, I need to make sure I'm judging it not just based on the player. Cause this is some of those instances where like, are the best players playing the best race? And that's why they're getting the best results? Or are players, are certain players just gravitating to a specific style? And I, I tried to take a look at like a 20,000 view, like overall, what, what is the general mass trying to play? And what am I seeing more? And that's just where I stand, stand right there.
Taker?
Uh, generally, I think the balance is really, really good. Um, if you compare it to the past, where we really had patches where Night Elf was completely broken for many, many years. Or back in the days, uh, also like Human was also like much worse than, than it's now. I think now we're pretty close. So I would also say Human Undead is probably a bit better than, uh, Orc and Night Elf. But it's, um, at the same time, it's also hard to say, because if you have a player like Happy and he's playing Undead, if he would play Night Elf or Orc with his skill level, he would probably, I would imagine, win all the games as well. So, um, like on a, on a broad level, I would also say like Human Undead has a slight edge, but overall I think the balance is as good as, as, as ever was, maybe like. I can't remember a time where it was closer than it is right now.
OC?
Um, I would agree with them as well. Uh, I would say Humans number one, Undead second. Um, and also I, I have a good reasoning behind it. I know you're gonna hate this. You also have to look at the variety of players. Human has the most championships with different people. You can't just say it's only TH and MP.
Yeah, but I, I'm not talking about the history of Warcraft III. I'm talking right now. What do you think of balance right now?
Like, okay, 2019, 2020, like, there's been so many different human tournament winners and they have the most titles in all tier categories. Um, Undead probably holds second. in all tier categories. Um, Undead probably holds second. Orc, honestly, I, it's really hard to rate them, because only Lyn is doing very well.
Focus occasionally, I guess.
Yeah, but when it comes to like actual lands, Focus always chokes for some reason. I don't know why. But that man really deserves a title, but he just, he gets, always gets so close and just doesn't do it. But um, honestly, I think recently though, like the last month, it seems like Elves are starting to get some momentum going. And uh, this will be our first big tournament, this the uh, how they do. So looking towards Moon and Lawliet, of course. But um, again, like, I, I agree with them as far as rankings go.
Um. Juan? Well, what do you heard about Lado last time? Well, what do you know about the bears and about the rifles? I never wanna hear that shit again, so.
Lado's dreaming about the beautiful bears, man. Um, yeah, I do think that in the current patch, uh, probably Undead and Human are probably the strongest right now, I do think, honestly. Uh, and then the lower part, yes. I think, I, there isn't probably a top one race, I would probably think, honestly. I don't think there's like the best race right now. The patch is, I think, balanced or most balanced than it actually ever was. Like I think in 1.28, the better kinda stacked, because we've been playing this patch for so many years. Um, but with the, with the recent, with the recent patches and the additional changes, new items. Um, also a topic that I think we should definitely discuss a little bit more, because I think there are still a couple of items that still need to be either nerfed or buffed.
Yeah, there's gold diamond rings that I get every game.
Yeah, uh, but I think uh, in general, yeah, Human definitely had a great matchup back in the days against Orcs. But it feels like that it kinda shifted into more like uh, 55, 45 for the Human. Right now, like I still think they're slightly favored, but with the FSTC Shaman meta, it's definitely way harder nowadays for the Humans to actually win in the end. Um, Human still is definitely favored, in my opinion, against Night Elf. And against Undead, it's just all about the early game from the Undead. And I still think that at tier three, it's getting not close, like uh, Undead favored. It's getting at least a little bit equal, in my, in my opinion. But I still think at like tier one, tier two, early mid-game, uh, it's still Undead favorite, I, I would think. Um, for the Undead, I still think it's uh, probably, they have one of the toughest times against Orc, so as uh, Human probably with Undead. Um. Orcs nowadays, just like you guys mentioned already, there's only Lyn. Focus, for some reason, chokes on every land. He managed to win against uh, Happy, uh, I think like two uh, WGLs before. I think he won them in the group stage. Uh, yeah, right. And then afterwards, I think he lost 0-2 clearly. And the games weren't even that close. I think the last game on Concealed Hill was a little bit closer. It was like a 30-minute game, but still he lost like 0-2, I think. So except for, except, except for uh, Lyn, there isn't a real Orc that is representing the race. And I think there was like a statistic where Orc comes uh, or doesn't really shine at all, except if it wasn't for Lyn right now, at least money-wise. Um, so I would definitely rank them somewhere in the lower part and same for Night Elf. But for Night Elf, I have to say, sorry, it's quite deserved at some point. I mean, the Night Elf race was probably one of, if not the strongest race for so many freaking years. And it was actually really good to see that there were a couple of nerfs finally. And I still think they still have the potential to shift a few matchups again. I mean, just look at what Undead has done for so many years, like we do not really have the diversity to really change our strategy. Yeah, we, we don't really have the diversity to change stuff, but at, at the end, we still had a couple of brain players that somehow just changed the build order and reinvented the whole matchup in the end, so. There said, I think a couple, a couple of races just need to maybe think about timings, creep routes, a little bit more, maybe heroes, I don't know. I think there's definitely potential.
But it's really nice how often the meta is changing nowadays, especially Orc versus Human. That's crazy. Like I, like I actually prefer, like, Human is my favorite matchup, even though it's quite hard, but it's just, for some reason, I like to kill peasants. I don't know why, but it's um.
It's very therapeutic.
It just feels good somehow. Um, but yeah, like the, the River and Orc, uh, River and Shaman strat, for instance. Uh, I really like to play that, but now everyone is going back to, to rifles. And it was like a back and forth all the time. And I've never, I never remember a time where we had so many uh, changes in the meta in such a short time without changing anything. So I think that's also like a really, really good point of um, the current point, uh, balance of the game. It's not like balance, but like the current state of the game.
Yeah.
What do you guys think about uh, the maps? Like the map pool has evolved a bunch. Like we finally like, you know, got rid of Turtle Rock and stuff in tournaments and then now like, there's new staples. Like Amazonia is like a full part of like every map pool. Uh, Concealed Hill, Northern Isle, like, do you guys, would you guys like to see more changes in the map pool in the future, like them being edited? Or even like swapped out for newer maps? Like, I guess Lado says, we didn't hear you.
Yeah, just uh, plus two damage to bears. Um, no, about, about the map pool, yeah, I'm all for new maps being added in. The community will either pick them up or put them down very quickly, based on if it's deemed a balanced map. Um, one map that could be considered to, to, to be rotated out of the standard map pool right now, I think, is Twisted Meadows. It just, it can create really fun games. It actually had, there was a crazy game. Uh, it was La Liet against Lucifer today. Uh, it was on Twisted Meadows. It was an absolutely insane game. But it's, it's so, it ends up creating this environment that's so far off meta, that it's almost like you have to learn how to play on Twisted Meadows, as far as like. Yeah, I, I don't know. It's, it, it also creates, I don't know. It creates some balances that, that don't exist in other matchups, which I guess is also good, because then you change your strategy based on the map. But I would say the furthest map out that does that is Twisted Meadows right now. All the other maps are great. They um, that, you still, obviously you have to consider like creep routes and the, the various race, racial uh, matchups. But the um, the map pool right now is, is great. I think it's, it's good.
OC?
Uh, sorry, I would like to see a map that has a boat, uh, like a competitive map that includes boats. I think that's really cool.
Yeah, should let's put airplanes in there as well.
That would be too much, Todd, but just some little boats, you know? One game from Krabby, he had like this crazy uh, game on Letter. I, I don't even know the name, the name of the map, to be honest, but there's one map. It's not a competitive map, but it's in the map pool. And I think that would just add like a new element to the games. That would be really fun to watch.
Yeah, but, but you don't wanna like be forcing the professional players to, like, you don't want like entertainment for entertainment's sake. You want the entertainment to be from the competitive play and not being like, like the players like figuring something out on the fly, like there's, you don't wanna put on like this weird sideshow because of the map, I, I think is what Lado is getting at, where Twisted Meadows is so far different. And adding a boat or having only zeppelins be able to like connect to each other? Or if you like, oh, I'm gonna eat through the trees with Flame Strike and, and you know, you know, summoning Ents in order to get to you. That would be a little bit, that'd be a little bit too odd.
Uh, map pool, um, I actually have to strongly disagree with Lado in Twisted Meadows. Some of the greatest things of all time, and they still happen every time we have a big tournament, are on Twisted Meadows.
Like, I said, OC, I said that though. I said, it, it creates good games, but it's, it, it creates games that are, that are so far off meta that you have to like learn how to play on that map. Which like I said, isn't a bad thing, but it's, it's its own thing. Like, like Twisted Meadows is separate from all the other maps, in my opinion.
And I'm actually, I really love the new maps, like Northern Isles, like that map is so fun of like, all races, honestly, like. At first, when we got all these new maps, we kinda like hated them at first, but now we've grown to love them. But honestly, I, I don't know what we rotate out. Like, what do we pick?
Well, what about Echo? Like, it's just like Echo is a little stale, right? Like you only have one expansion, you only have so many cribs, like. Is it really one of the most interesting maps out there? I don't think so, personally.
Uh, that's actually a good choice. I say Echo and actually some leagues still use Ancient Isles, believe it or not. That one, I, I hate that map. Get rid of that.
Juan?
I do think that Tarina Stand somehow has to be removed.
Oh, Shadow Hunter, good lord.
Yeah, I know, but, yeah, I know. But I still think it's a really hard map, at least as an Undead, and I still think that uh, only probably Humans and Night Elves are really enjoying this map and maybe Orcs against Undeads, but that's it for, for nowadays' balance standards right now. Um, so yeah, obviously I'm quite biased. And I don't really wanna see like Tarina Stand and further map pools, but it's also with the recent changes, that Twisted Meadows has also been a pretty bad map nowadays for Undeads, since you can't really creep anything anymore, um, due to the skeletons, uh, change. Uh, Echo Isle and Amazonia are like these kind of maps where it kinda gets stale at some point, just like Todd mentioned, due to the expo limitations, right? So potentially you can get only one expo. There aren't really too many spots on this map to creep. And especially on Amazonia, when, when the expo is like, I don't know how much gold, like, feels like 20k gold in there. Uh, it just never runs out, so I don't know. Amazonia is actually quite fun at the same time, but in a long-term game, really, really boring. For example, if you see an Undead mirror on Amazonia, you just wanna go to bed and sleep and you don't even wanna see it anymore, right?
Yeah.
Like Amazonia is really, really bad in, in the long-term game. But a map that I definitely would uh, put out is definitely Tarina Stand, I think.
Okay, your bans, um. Yeah, no, personally, I would say like if we had to rotate anything else, maybe, I don't know, yeah, Twisted Meadows. If we, if we remove Twisted Meadows from the map pool, we would need a similar map that's like kinda big. I don't know that the islands are like necessary. Maybe save Twisted Meadows for like the two-on-twos, I think it's like more funny, two-on-twos maybe, but.
Do you guys remember uh, Nomad Isle from back then? It was a three-players map? Top left, top right, bottom?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, like the weird triangle where you scout one, yeah, yeah.
Right, right. I never really thought that it's such a bad map. I still think it's better than some maps that we have in the current map pool, but it's just my opinion right now. But I still think, uh, I still think that the map was at least a little bit better designed than maps like Echo, in my opinion.
Yeah, like if, if I was to wanna see a new map take out Echo, I, I like the maps that have an odd number of gold mines, where there's that center gold mine and people are constant, like, you kind of wanna fight for that. Your expansions are there, but it's not gonna last you that long. And then there's this like territory control. If you can kind of like box out your opponent, trap your opponent, get them on the back foot and then get a, a map and economic advantage. That's, I think that's a good way of using the map to have interesting strategies and making it so that you learn, have to learn how to play on that map. As opposed to the, the interesting matchups that we often see on Twisted Meadows.
I feel like in StarCraft 2, I know like quite a few, or like, I guess a few mapmakers and stuff. And I kinda know like, you know, I've talked to them and uh, there were times where like I really knew what was happening. But in Warcraft III, I can't say I really know any mapmakers. Do you guys know any or like, is there any one of them on like on forums and stuff that maybe we could talk to and try and see like, if they'd be down to try and make some mapping, like collaborating with people and getting feedback and everything?
Maybe they're listening now.
Yeah, that would be cool.
There was actually a, a tournament, it was like a community map tournament that was hosted. It wasn't super duper popular, but it was, I, I don't know, eight community maps and people were forced to play on those maps for this tournament and then they gave feedback about the maps. I think it was a cool idea. Um, it wasn't, like I said, it wasn't super popular. I think there was maybe like 30 players or something that played in it. Um, but something like that to, to check out the new maps, to see if it's worth giving a shot at putting the map in for a bigger tournament, I think is great.
Uh, all right, let's, uh, actually no. One last thing about balance, um, if you guys, if you guys would like to see one thing changed in the game, or like it can be like one, two, three, you know, depending on like, how in-depth you wanna go about talking, uh, like how long you wanna talk about it, like. What would you like to see changed? Like, is there any priority for you that you're like, okay, like that should not be like this in the game? Krota, what do you think?
Uh, I, I think the slaughterhouse shouldn't produce your seed unit, your tank unit, your healing unit and your anti-magic unit. And it actually takes away from the lot of the diversity and the, um, like, you, you know that there's gonna be at least one slaughterhouse every game. And it, it kind of counters everything. Uh, I, I do feel that, um, you're kind of pigeonholing Undead already, since their dispel is at, is at tier three. So um, I don't know if you guys remember like the Wand of Negation, an old Reign of Chaos.
Yes.
Uh, Goblin Merchant Shop item. If you like, like the Ritualistic Dagger, I think I've seen it once or twice being used by Undead. So if you add the Wand of Negation at tier two to them, um, and then that way, if they wanna stay at tier two, they're not gonna get punished by mass summons, um, and not forced tier three. And maybe do something where, um, how they had the, the Torren Totem. Now like move the Spiritwalker for, you know, from the Spirit Lodge to the Torren Totem, do something where.
You, you put the mid wagon in like at the temple or something?
Well, no, like, they, at least maybe make it so that, see, I, I don't, I know what I don't like, I don't have the solution. And I, and I want, yeah, see, that's the problem, right? Because there's so many moving parts and you, you introduce one little change and you forget about this matchup at this time in these scenarios. And, and balance is such a difficult thing to talk about. But I, I, I wa, I know there's a problem here, but like, do I cut the red wire or blue wire? Or am I gonna blow this all up type of thing?
Bears plus two damage.
Oh my gods. I hate this guy.
He's still here.
A pretty good idea. I would say, I would, honestly, I think they need to change tier four items. Let's say for example, in LR, you got the two gold mines on the sides. Uh, one guy gets Command Aura with like a bunch of rifles or an army that's similar size. Another person gets fricking Elma Valor, like, they need, they need to buff the lower tier items for tier four. Or have, have, have some like reroll system, like, let's say you can take it to a shop, spend 100 gold. Get a chance to get a different tier item, but as you reroll, you can't sell for as much, you know? Just do something with tier four items, because it really, RNG really hurts some games, honestly. It really does. But um, as far as patch, honestly, this would probably be a mixed review thing, but I wouldn't, I'd be open-minded to a similar Dota 2-style patch system. Where they just throw a bunch of random shit in there and change everything. It keeps the game fresh, everybody adapting constantly. But I, I think there's some people that don't want that. They, they like to keep what we have.
Taker?
Yeah, I think um, changing too much in uh, in short intervals would really, um, it would be better in terms of, um, yeah, seeing new stuff for sure, but it will also be a, a challenge to to kind of master a specific strategy. So um, it might get a bit too confusing, I would be afraid of that, maybe, um. Maybe you could have like a special modus or so, where you can have like, okay, in this modus, there, there's like different kind of item drops and maybe the roles that's similar to like Diablo, basically, what you described. Um, maybe have it like as an extra modus and then you can decide on which modus you're gonna play. And um, that way you can have specific tournaments. One tournament will have like the standard rules and then another tournament could have kind of like slightly amended rules with different item drops and stuff like that. Um, and out of that, I think the only thing they should do is bring back the Reign of Chaos towers. That would be good. Then I would come back. Full-time, man.
Taker, I'm, I'm gonna chime in just because I disagree with you on that. I think that would split the community in twos, in, in, in two ways. And I think, and you don't wanna split the community. Uh, you'd never want to, to divide it in terms of the numbers. You wanna grow the numbers that you have. So uh, I don't think that having like two different versions of the game live at the same time is a good idea.
Oh, you would still have the numbers. It would just be like an option when you create a game, like similar to the option, uh, enable observers, have like an option saying, enable specific custom item drops, you know? Like in the same game, in the same community.
I mean, I'm okay, I'm okay with that if it's decided, like, if that's a better solution, then implement it into the main game and that's what everyone ends up playing. But as, you know, it, it, when you start to, if you start to diverge the community, it's, it's not good. I, I mean, I, I, I'm drawing on experience from Smash Brothers. There's actually this game called Project M that split the, the Smash Brothers Melee community into two, essentially. And it was, it was, people thought it was good. People thought it was a good idea at first, but essentially what it ended up doing is, is it, it split an already small community into two separate groups that basically didn't talk to each other. So there was this Melee community and then there was Project M and uh, yeah, it wasn't good. I know, I, someone says Smash Brothers, again, sorry guys, I keep bringing up other references.
I got your point though.
Yeah, well, I think uh, if there's like one thing I would change, it would be probably not only one. Like, like I said, uh, I would probably change a Crypt Lord, like it's a completely useless zero, for example. The, the Ritual Dagger, he's gone completely useless as well, from a pretty OP item in the better to a almost useless item that you never really wanna buy now. Um, but what I do think is, and that is something that always uh, comes into my mind, are certain items. Um, but what I do think is, and that is something that always, uh, comes into my mind are certain items in the loot table. For example, if you're creeping the shop on Last Refuge and you get a wand of mana stealing, like the, the item just doesn't feel good at all compared to a big HP potion and potion of mana. Like the tier that I would rate between these items is so big that you can't even compare these two items anymore in a situation. Like why do I want to, uh, remove 50 mana and gain it when I can't even use a spell because of it for most of the time? Um, so they either should, in my opinion, buff this item so that you're not getting like 50 mana. Maybe you should get 75, maybe even more so that it's more rewarding to creep those. Uh, these bots, for example. At the same time, I also think that these red spots are also quite a pain in the ass, especially in mirrors. For example, you're playing feed mirror or you're playing, I don't know, uh, human mirror knights where someone gets, uh, I don't know, TC aura, unholy aura, stuff like that, where you have better movement. It will definitely be something that you recognize in those fights since it's not only like a level one aura, it's like a level one point five, I think that you can find there. And it's just way too good compared to the items that you can also find at the red loot table as well. Like there are plus four, plus four item. And this guy is basically getting no beneficial advantage out of it when someone is getting, uh, level 1.5 aura. So you either have to nerf the auras in my opinion, or it is something that I also talked to InsoB on the stream lately. Um, you maybe remove the plus four, four items and make it in a, in a way where it's getting one simple item and it gives you plus four, four, four on all three stats, for example. But then again, you have like two more loots that you could potentially get at the spot and I don't know, feel free to whatever thing you want to put in there. Maybe some items from Twisted Meadows, like a big mana pole, uh, big mana pendant. I also think these, uh, items are quite overpowered. Maybe these items also need to get slightly nerfed because I think 250 mana on certain heroes where you also can get a robe of the Medja is just insanely good for potent, like for Shadow Hunter, for example, he will just spam heal wave non-stop. Um, maybe create new items, maybe make a periop of fatality and a pendant of energy in one item, but not like 150 HP, may, maybe make a 100, 100 HP, 100 mana or something. I don't know. But just like an idea of how you could maybe fix certain situations where auras are getting just too big in these situations.
I think I, I got just the fix actually for this. In my opinion, I got a pretty good idea. Like right now it feels like you're on a TV show and if you take door number one, you get a car. If you take door number two, you get like a microwave or something. It's like completely imbalanced, you know, like microwave is the mana steal. So instead of like trying to fix the items, which is also possible by like tweaking them, I think raising the goals that every items give would make it much better because either you get a really good item or you get a whole lot of cash to like make more units. Like right now, like if you sell a mana steal, I think it's like 200 that you get, you know, it doesn't feel like it's that good. Like I'd much rather have a greater mana or greater healing than having 200. So I feel like maybe if they make it like 300, you know, or like find the right number somewhere in there. And same thing with the starting items, you know, like if you find like two rings in a row, it's like so depressing because you, you sell them for like almost nothing. So it's like really like you're the minus. You had like a big disadvantage. I mean, I'm speaking about like if you're human, because you've got an archmage. Uh, so I feel like if they, if they increase the gold, you would be a lot less sad about finding rings because then you don't have claws, but at least you're getting some gold for it. Like you're going to the shop, you're selling them, you get boots a little bit more easily. You get everything else, maybe like one extra footman or something, which helps a lot. What do you guys think about that?
Well, I gotta go. I'm sorry. Um, thank you for inviting me. I, yeah.
Shout out, shout out Squig.
Oh yeah. So yeah, you can definitely follow me on, on Twitch as Coda SC or Coda Gaming on YouTube. I literally have thousands upon thousands of videos. If you guys are looking for old, old replays that you can no longer play on your particular version, because you know, patch changes and whatnot. Definitely go ahead and check it out. And Todd, thank you. I'll see you in Anaheim. OC, I'll see you as well. And Taker, Juan, Lotto, I hope I get to meet you guys in person one day.
See you man, everyone.
Later.
Well, feels bad for OC though.
You know what, guys? When it came to balance, I don't know how this slipped all of our minds. TC Stomp, MK Clap. We totally forgot to mention those.
Yeah, TC Stomp. Yeah, yeah, that's the one.
Not that good.
I think almost everybody agrees that Stomp needs to be changed, like on, especially on level three. What is it? Like it stuns for like five seconds?
It's done for like five seconds. You know what's even funny? In the latest, in the latest pa, patch, they actually buffed the Stomp.
Yeah, nobody used it before, right? It was all shockwave.
Yeah, well, not against undead. But yeah, uh, but it's like something that is, uh, really interesting to me. Like why doesn't Blizzard employee think that something where the whole community thinks that one spell is broken? There's like an employee sitting in the office and they're like, yeah, five seconds done. We're going to even increase the damage of the spell now. And that's what they basically did in the latest, in the latest patch. And I don't even know why, like, why would you buff Stomp when people are literally crying about the spell for basically 10 years now?
But how do you know that's how you went down though? Maybe that Blizzard employee who just woke up wasn't going to make any changes and suddenly he got this email. You're not going to believe the idea I had. Stand by, follow Grubby. And then like he opened.
Sounds, sounds real to me. But yeah, um.
So how could they change Stomp in a way that?
I think the rate, the, the AoE Stomp is a little bit too big, I think. And either they have to increase the mana slightly or the duration of the Stomp. They have to somewhere between, uh, fix between the Stomp duration of five seconds or the cooldown, one of these things in my opinion. They definitely need to nerf the AoE on level three and slightly the, uh, duration on, on from five to four maybe, or the cooldown at least.
Take her.
Oh, snap, he was videoed. What about it, Taker?
What do you think about scythe mana?
Hey, hey, we're going, we're talking about torrent and undead units right now.
Well, Call of Duty is obviously strong, but I also think that, uh, after many, many years, people also figured out a little bit, uh, how to play against it. Also there's still, now, since we're also talking about items. There are a lot of items in this game that, uh, is quite bad for undead, for example, root bracers. It's basically almost the only item that it feels like is literally complete shit if your opponents get it as an undead.
You're right on that one.
Eh, eh, ever thought about it? It's basically a designed item just to fuck off undeads.
True.
Now imagine a, a demon under with root bracers. So you don't even have mana and if you have mana, you can't even kill him anymore.
All right, uh, let's move on to next topic. Uh, we believe that WCG may have been teased as Gornland Harbor. They're doing such a fantastic job. Either these guys, uh, they're translating a lot of the stuff that's posted, you know, on the, on Chinese websites and whatnot to the Western scene. So we always kind of can keep up with everything that's happening. And apparently on the WCG website, if I understood that rights, there was a poll posted that asked which one of your favorite players would you like to see at WCG? And in it, there was a bunch of Warcraft three players. I think, actually I can't find it right now. So I had it open. Oh yeah. So it was Moon Infi and TH, I think are listed in it. Which makes us think that WCG, uh, might have Warcraft three return.
I'm pretty sure it will return. Um, it's just, what I wonder is where will it be? Will it be back in China? Because they used to always change the location, at least after a couple of years of Korea and the very early days, they decided at some point, I think 2007 or so, they decided to have, uh, a different location. So they had like one in Cologne that was 2008. I remember that because I was there, but they, they had like a concept of changing locations. Um, but I'm wondering if they will, I'm probably, I'm pretty sure they will stick with China. What do you, what do you guys think?
Yeah, I think they're going to stay in the, the Asian scene. Like that's where most of the WCGs were at. Uh, hopefully they do, they do Korea this year. I do have to say one thing for the love of Christ, find a goddamn observer that can actually observe the game. You guys remember that, but it, it, it was, it was rough watching this game.
Yeah, I think the guy was taking a lot of time to watch items.
Yeah, yeah. I was losing my mind there and so were back to Warcraft so much that before, I think it was the semifinals. Um, Back to Warcraft was going to do one of the semifinals and also I think, uh, maybe the third place match or something like that. I talked to, uh, some people in charge and I was like, just let me observe, like, I'll just do it, like, and then they were like, they spoke to, you know, production and stuff because they have to relay the info and they were telling me that I think the person that was observing was doing multiple jobs at once. And that's why I couldn't just focus on observing. So they were like, okay, for this one, he's actually only going to observe. And he did a much better job already in that series. Like I was actually looking at it and I was like, okay, he's actually doing really good now. So after that, I kind of dropped it and I didn't ask to observe anymore. But yeah, before that, it was for sure a little painful. I feel like even if you had given us a mouse and keyboard at the casting desk while we cast, we would have done a better job than that for sure. So that was, yeah.
That's crazy. Imagining that they were doing something else at the same time. It was such a huge production. So many people live in, like it was an amazing event, actually. And then the guy observing the game is doing two things at the same time. I didn't know that actually. That's crazy. Hopefully they learn from that for the next one.
The observer was atrocious and a, I, any, anyone who plays the game for any significant amount of time could have done a better job. So yes, observer, please.
Uh, okay. The Back to Warcraft Valentine's Invitational, I think that was in place of, um, a free markup instead of a free markup last Friday, we had, since free markup is no more, we had that take place, if I remember correctly. And I'll post a link in, uh, the Discord, give me a sec, so you guys can open it as well. Cause I think that wasn't in the notes. Yeah, okay, I put it in group. So we had Hawk actually take that down. And uh, Neutron take second place and yeah, Exlord and Sparrow were defeated in the semifinals. The Germans not quite able to do, uh, to do well here. Were you guys able to follow that? I think it was a pretty nice initiative by Back to Warcraft to put this on, you know, like put a prize pool themselves and have like a four player tournament.
Yeah, um, the, the Hawk and Sparrow series was so close. I, I really enjoyed watching that, but what I was truly shocked was Exlor getting 3-0'd by Neutron. Like Exlor's been playing pretty well. I expect at least a map. But the 3-0 was honestly a shocker to me, but I mean, well played the Neutron. But Hawk winning it all, it, it honestly makes sense. I'd expect him to win. Um, it, it was a cool tournament, you know? I liked it.
Neutron has been grinding on netis. He's been playing a ton of netis and he's improved a lot. It's, uh, it's pretty noticeable. When, when you watch the games against Exlord, you can tell Neutron has been putting in some work. And yeah, he, he did great. Now, it wasn't enough to overcome the imbalance that Night Elf is facing against Human, but he did a great job, uh, and he put up a good show for, for the Night Elf players.
Juan, what do you think?
Hmm, uh, well, unfortunately I couldn't see the games or didn't really see the games since I had to work at the time. But I do know that Exlord does, uh, have a couple of problems against Neutron. Hmm, they were practicing or doing like a couple of custom games before. And I heard, if I remember correctly, he didn't really win a single game or maybe, uh, one out of five, I think. So, yeah.
Okay, um, okay, let's talk about the Huya Reforged Invitational. Which was a pretty nice tournament. Uh, I had around slightly less than 600 bucks on the line. And took place, uh, just a few days ago. That was from the 14th to 16th. And so we had, I think it's eight players. Yeah, we had eight players, Cine, PCG, ShaoKK, Colorful, Faultitude, Fifteen Sway, WZ and Ling Guagu. And in the lower bracket finals, actually in the, in the winner bracket finals, Colorful beats Romantic, who apparently played Orc. And by Romantic, I mean Faultitude. So I mean, I don't even know what to call this guy anymore. Uh, in the lower bracket finals, Faultitude beats Fifteen Sway two and one. And in the finals, and this is really weird because I thought Human was the best race, but he lost to a Night Elf, Colorful. What's happened there?
I, so I, I watched those games. For whatever reason, Romantic didn't ban TS. I don't know. I, I know TS is kind of a good map for Human, but Night Elf players have figured out that TS is the warden map and it's a good warden player. I would actually go as far to say that Night Elf is favored against Human on TS. And they started on TS. I have no idea why Romantic wouldn't ban TS against, again, or sorry, why, yeah, why he wouldn't ban it against Colorful. Especially Colorful was known for doing.
It's supposed to be one of the best human maps though.
Uh, yeah, I, I still, against Night Elf, I think it should, I think Human should ban it just because it's so easy to get level three with Warden. And it's so easy to harass the main and the expansion with Warden. So, um, I, I think he made a mistake with his bans. I think it would have, the series could have gone potentially a different way. Um, but who knows? You, you don't want to play those what-if games when it comes to competitive Warcraft, but I think he made a mistake in not banning TS.
Um, I will say Colorful winning the tournament was a pretty big shocker, but in, in Romantic's defense, it seemed like he didn't take this tournament that seriously. Like he kept playing off races in the last series. So, I mean, the, the price pool was very low. Uh, I don't know.
The Orcs. The Orcs didn't do that well, are. I didn't see the games that I have to catch up with them in next days, but I see, um, Ling Guagu dropped out pretty early and also ShaoKK. What about Huck? Is he still playing or is he kind of taking a break?
Uh, Huck is banned for competitive tournaments for like one to two years. He had a, a blade situation.
Oh my God.
It, it, it's, it's honestly sad because Huck was getting pretty damn good.
Yeah.
Dude, that guy has some insane micro. Holy shit. So we won't see it for an area here, unfortunately.
That's a shame.
Okay, uh, let's move to our last topic here, if you can call it that, the Q and A. So I made, uh, I made a thread on Reddit where people could leave questions. We're going to answer that first and then we'll take some questions from the chat as well. So let's head to Reddit first. Uh, actually, I don't know if you guys have it, so I'll post the link as well. For you guys in the Discord group, so you can open it and have an eye on it. Uh, so we had two times two is two. Okay. Well, that's a tricky nickname. Uh, who asked regarding learning curve? How accessible is Warcraft three to new players trying to play online?
Should I take this?
Yeah, go for it.
Uh, I think it's, it's hard for new players right now and especially with the no ladder or MMR system being introduced with the game. And I, I know there is like that hidden MMR system, but it's not a hundred percent perfect because as OC was saying, you still play against Joe Blows a lot of the time. And the, but looking at it from a, a Joe Blow perspective, you know, you're, you're going to be matched up against these people that have been playing the game for 10 years. So, uh, not having a good MMR system where you're playing against people of your skill level. I, I'm worried that what's going to happen is these players that are buying into this game for the first time in 10 or 15 years and haven't been playing and not really at the top or competitive level. They'll sign on, they'll play five games. Of those five games, four of those players will have been playing the game for 10 years. They'll get completely smashed. They'll have a terrible experience and they'll just, they'll be done with Warcraft. And I hope that's not the case. But I have a feeling that that's more than likely. Now, that being said, I think there are some things that Blizzard can do to help the community, like putting streamers in the Bnet Launcher or doing something with like custom maps and featuring custom maps and like the, like the playlist that, that would help with build orders or would help with, um, you know, understanding your race or matchups or knowing, knowing your hero's strengths and weaknesses, those kinds of things. So it's definitely a, it's a, it's a very steep learning curve and this game is extremely punishable. In terms of if you make a mistake, a good player is going to punish it 100% of the time. And, uh, yeah, and it feels, it feels bad. So it's definitely a steep learning curve. I think there's some things that Blizzard could do to help introduce those newer players, but I don't see that happening right now.
Well said, Coach Lotto. Well said.
Thanks.
Uh, does Warcraft three naturally attract individuals who like steep learning curves? Or can this game PvP mode, so I guess even it's multiplayer, be for everyone?
Uh, I would say no. Honestly, the RTS category, it, it's, it's a unique category, honestly. Like you love it or you hate it. And unfortunately, like, there's not that many people that enjoy RTS. And what Blizzard has done recently really isn't helping our cause. Like this was our chance to shine and they just completely blew it out of the water. So ho, hopefully they get their stuff together and we can get the RTS community growing. But, um, again, it's, it's a unique taste. It's like eating lamb. You love it or you hate it.
I think actually lots of people really love to watch it, but they know they can't compete on, on a level where they would kind of like get something out of it, but I know, many people are still just watching. I think actually lots of people really love to watch it, but they know they can't compete on, on a level where they would kind of like get something out of it. But I know many people are still just watching the game. Um, and I think with a good MMR, it would actually be rewarding for all kinds of people on all kinds of skill levels. So that's really like the most important thing. I know we have an MMR now in place, but it feels like it's not great yet. Um, I'm not sure what your opinion of the, on the current MMA MRs, but I have a feeling it's not as good as the old one. So that's certainly something they have to fix. It's like so important, uh, together with like profiles and these things that I'm missing. Um, but I do think that, um, just watching the game would still attract a lot of people. And that's the thing that I'm really looking forward to with the ESL, uh, DreamHack events now, to see um, how many people will actually watch the game that just know Warcraft from back in the days from like 15 years ago. And they're just curious to see what's going on now. So that's gonna be like, uh, a really, really interesting thing to find out. And also like the fact that the clans are coming back in now, that will draw more attention, like all the Maus fans, they will like, uh, kind of see, ah, wait, Warcraft, I remember that. It was so cool back in the days. Um, so I think just in terms of watching, as, as long as you have a basic understanding of the game, I think you can follow the game. If you have never seen the game before, obviously, then there is no way you can follow at all. So for complete newcomers, it's, it's hard to follow. But for the people that, um, kind of are related with, um, esports in general, they probably, they, they would have heard about RTS at some point in their time. And they would, um, probably from StarCraft, that's, that, that has quite a big scene. So they, they would have some kind of basic knowledge, and I think with that, it would still attract a lot of new people, even if we have all these problems right now.
Uh, Lurchy Bald asked, with Mausports coming to Warcraft III, do you think more big teams will show interest? I guess he means in getting players and, uh, yeah, building a team like Mausports has done.
Yes, but I think right now, well, I know right now, there's at least like three big organizations that are in debate mode right now, like like Warcraft has what, 0.5 in like a review scale? And like, honestly, they're just waiting. You know, if, if Blizzard turns this around, I think they're gonna dive in. Honestly, it's, it's all on Blizzard's hands right now. If they want this game to succeed and sponsors to come in, they need to fix stuff. And they will come in if things get fixed. I can guarantee it.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff in the pipeline for sure. Also from, um, complete, um, new sponsors and stuff that want to do tournaments, but they're putting a halt on it right now. So it would really be good if Blizzard gets some kind of, uh, fix soon. And yeah, maybe turn, turn the wheel around.
I think that'd be pretty sick to like, you know, phase Lado or something.
Don't phase me? What do you mean?
Then, then next to, next to all the, uh, Call of Duty chats, you know, Lado playing from his couch on to the place.
I don't know, it seemed more in brazes or something, like casting culture or something.
Should talk to take.
Kaldo is the guest. And also, Lurchy Ball also asked, also, do you think if they are a team like that, wanted to play in W3IL, should they be put into First Division right away? I think right now is the perfect timing to apply, yeah, right? Like, I think there's still a bit of time to play the W3IL. I do believe if a team like Mausports wanted to play in W3IL, yes, they should be added to Division One. But at the same time, if there's already rules that say that only so many teams get like demoted and stuff, you can just kick out a team and be like, sorry, guys, but they built a team and they're pretty good, so they're gonna take your spot. So I guess, uh, we would have to know more about the rules to answer this question.
I'd say, uh, I've experienced that with Dust. Um, we played the first season and we didn't do too well. We kept using like B lineup players because like the A lineup couldn't really make those times. And then Season Two came around and other good teams applied. They said, okay, you, you were at the bottom ends, you know, you're going to the other division. But then they had a few teams drop out and Dust came back up. And then Dust actually made, uh, second place that season. But that's pretty much how they do it. Like, the bottom-end teams, if a stronger team comes above them with higher ELO ranking, they just phase them down. That's how they do it.
Uh, we had a question for Krota, but sadly had to go after two hours. And Warbeard asks, most of the races have different viable first hero picks, but all I ever see from Undead is Death Knights. What changes would you make, if any, to the other heroes to, to increase their viability? So I guess that's a question for one.
Yeah, I think that's also something, uh, something where we have, uh, talk about balance as well. Um, I think the Crypt Lord, the beetles are quite underwhelming if you use them, for example, like they're just bad at all. If you're compared to, if you compare the beetles to a Water elemental or Spirit Wolves, for example, or even Trance, they're just simply the worst, basically, out of these summons. Um, also, I kinda hate the Impale mechanic, like, you can choke that spell up so easily, like you press on the ground and then you start moving. So the animation gets cancelled. And, and that means that you're not stunning your opponent, but you still invest the 100 mana. So you're basically giving a, uh, a spell for free. I'm not sure if you guys actually experienced that, but it can happen so many times because that spell is just still bugged.
Yeah, it should be, it should be instant cast.
Yeah. And also I think it's quite dumb, uh, to make these units invulnerable while they're in air. So either they should, uh, somehow change the graphics, I don't know, so, something that you, uh, you, where you're able to focus the units or the heroes when they are getting stunned, not like wait a second or two until they land on the ground, like it's really stupid. Um, especially for the duration of the stun at level one or N2, it's not even that long. Um, I think they made a really good change with Dreadlord. We do see Dreadlord nowadays quite often, but at least on Tirana Stan and smaller maps where you can actually set up an expo quite easily. Uh, we see a few Lich first nowadays against humans, especially today. I think Enz did, uh, played it, uh, against Death Note on Last Refuge. It becomes more of a trend or a meta nowadays where Annette also tried to experiment with Lich first against humans that will try to expo. But balancing wise, honestly, I don't really have an idea. Like, obviously, you're taking a Death Knight that is supposed to be a support hero to somehow keep something alive because you have a lack of healing as an Annette until you reach tier two with statues and stuff, but then you want to use them for something else later on. For stupid, uh, bad, uh, units that, uh, four, five supply, right? Once they run out of mana, they're just simply useless. The dispel is quite bad nowadays since they nerfed it. I don't know. Um, maybe they need to change something with the coil so that, uh, Death Knight doesn't get used all of it. But I think the problem isn't really the coil. I think it's just something that the heroes for Annette are just quite underwhelming if you're playing them first because there's not enough healing potential in our shop right now, or you need, uh, units, uh, diversity at tier two.
And he also added, uh, Taker, which country is the best food?
Uh, well, that's a very good Warcraft-related question, but I would say in, in Europe, Georgia's really good and quite underrated. Many people don't know about the cuisine in, uh, in, in Georgia. And I really like
The correct answer was France.
German food, of course, is really good. No, just kidding. No, actually, it is good. But I think, um, like Central American street food, I really enjoy that, like all across the countries there.
Okay, um, I miss GSP asked, does anyone like the arranged team, which is random team format? And like, what would you do to save team games? I'm not sure that team games need saving, but uh, yeah, I guess, do you, would you guys want to improve anything about team games?
I actually love it. Um, the issue is right now, like, the team MMR is actually bugged. If you win or lose a game, you don't decrease or increase.
Yeah.
MMR in general right now is, is pretty flawed. But, um, if they fix MMR and is accurate, I think RT versus AT is actually pretty fun. It adds more flavors. So I actually love it. I really do.
Yeah, that's kind of, uh, that's kind of the way Netties does their 2v2 system right now. And it really is fine. Like, you can, of course, it's, it's fun to go on and play with a friend and play 2v2 that way, but, uh, if the, the Netties MMR system is good in such a way that you, if you've already hit your MMR and you're, you know, you know who you're playing with is going to be somewhat decent, you feel totally fine queuing into, you know, an RT 2v2 game, knowing that you might be playing against an AT 2v2 team, as long as the players are of somewhat equal skill level.
Um, Mike Tyson 725 asked, question to OC, what is your diet?
What is my diet?
Yeah.
Oh, boy. Cheeseburgers, bacon, and more cheeseburgers.
That's really American.
All right, we, we got that one out of the way. Okay, so that's it for the Reddit questions. Now we're gonna take some questions from the chat. So Royal asked, how about they change some items in Goblin Merchants? Take out Scroll Protection slash HP item, Circuit and add new items?
Uh, no, I would say if, if anything, take out the other items that aren't used and put in new items. Don't take out the items that are used. Uh, all of the other ones. I know the Vitality item is kind of used, uh, a little bit in FFA and in 4v4 stuff, but um, basically all the, I, I guess invis pod is used a little bit too. Um, yeah, I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, I can't think of anything that's not used.
Yeah, no, I, I, sorry, I, I take that back.
And I guess Circuit, actually, they should get rid of Circuits. I'm so tired of these Blade Masters, not even creeping anything, like picking that up. Selling TP because they're invincible and can escape anything anyway. Um, Todd, everyone's favorite custom game. Do you guys have a favorite custom game?
Legion City, obviously.
What is that?
Legion City. You never played it?
No, I don't play any custom game.
Tower defense.
Yeah, it's like a tower defense.
Anything with towers is good.
It's been a while since I played CGs, but like back in the days, um, I always loved Uther Party with a bunch of friends.
Yeah.
Choice.
My, my go-tos are, uh, Uther Party, um, Footman Frenzy was fun back in the day, and, uh, uh, Farm TD was my TD of choice.
Yikes.
Uh, Norman8 asked, on which channel will Anaheim be streamed? Um, I'm not sure about the exact link so far, but I guess it'll be posted everywhere on social media. I'll host the stream. Back to Warcraft, I'm pretty sure we'll host the stream as well. So it should be pretty easy to find. Like, if you go to Warcraft III, it's probably gonna be number one as well. I would assume probably something like twitch.tv/dreamhackwc3 or Warcraft, yeah.
Yeah, actually, that'd be great if they do. Like, they don't know if this will be theirs or Blizzard's.
I think it's most likely to be DreamHack.
Wouldn't it be great if Blizzard featured the stream in the B net launcher?
Yes, 100%.
Come on, man. Put the stream in the B net launcher. You've done it before. Do it for DreamHack. It would be so good.
Yeah, that'd be pretty sick.
I think 30 minutes of coding is a little too difficult for them, though, unfortunately.
The, the technology isn't quite there yet.
A few dollars company, by the way.
Uh, Hasi Hasmat asked, what do you think about the fact that most games are now streaming the Reforged graphics instead of the classic one? So I think he means for like official streams and stuff, because anybody that's like playing even semi-competitive, I think, uses classic graphics. So like Back to Warcraft, uh, is only streaming in Reforged graphics for the most part, not when it's on Netties because it's not available yet there, but, uh, we can expect, obviously, DreamHack to also be in Reforged graphics. What do you guys think about that?
I actually like it because, because as you said, most of us, um, players, we're playing in classic graphics for the reasons that we stated already. And, but I actually enjoy watching the Reforged graphics if I don't have to manage my units. Um, even though it's 100%, but I actually think it's a good thing because then that way I can kind of appreciate like the new flavor that we have now. But yeah, hopefully at some point we will all switch over if they make it work for everyone.
Yeah, I've always felt like as a spectator, the Reforged graphics are amazing. But like playing, like dealing with those bugs and issues, it just, it's such a pain in the ass. It just tilts you.
Um, Frank asked, at the current states that Warcraft III is facing, don't you think we'll be in a way better state if Blizzard only chose to communicate? And then, uh, yeah, basically he's explaining that he would like Blizzard to say clearly like what they're gonna release and when they release it and stuff. Well, I completely agree with you, like, uh, but I'm not gonna sit there and pretend I understand how a giant company like Blizzard works, right? But I think it'd be great if they announced what they were gonna fix and when that was gonna happen. And then, uh, they, they did it, you know, like, I guess for the most part, we don't have much of a way to communicate with them. I'm hoping that some of them watch this show and confident that they will watch it and, uh, that they'll make a lot of this stuff happen, so.
Actually, you guys remember, uh, just after the Warcraft Invitational, uh, that was back in 2018 in February, I think, when they started to release more patches again, for each of the patch notes, they had like a proper explanation why they did, why they did that change.
Yeah.
Disappeared again, right, with, with the recent patches? Or did I just miss it, maybe?
It just feels like the support in general has somehow changed at all. Like, I think there isn't really, it feels like there's no real team behind it anymore that really wants to talk to the community. At least, that's what, uh, I experienced from the last one year maybe now, after the Invitational and the patches that you just mentioned. Um, if you like taking, like, in consideration with, uh, re-Overwatch, for example, there's like, I think still Jeff Kaplan, uh, in the team. And you see like the, 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 the support is like really amazing. They put out news all the freaking time. You know what they're thinking and what their next steps will be. But you don't really see it in any other esports game from Blizzard anymore. Like, there's nothing, I think, in, I'm not following StarCraft 2 at all anymore. But, uh, there should definitely be at least somewhat of an communication between community and the developer, in my opinion. Because it feels like being back in 2016 at some point where the game was almost literally dead. There was literally no, um, no news, no statements, no info from Blizzard, nothing. And it's almost, not like almost, but almost the same where we are getting at some point again. Like, they're doing some patches, they're telling us what's gonna happen, but we have absolutely no time, uh, no idea, like how much time will they take for certain things.
Do you think that has something to do with the fact that many people actually refunded and with a company, they're just looking at numbers? If they see like all the people that refunded and they see the revenue that's kind of, kind of lost again with Reforged, maybe that's also part of a reason why they reduced the amount of staff, maybe?
Yeah, could be. I, I mean, I completely gave up on the company Blizzard as it used to be back in the days. Like, the company that has created Warcraft III back then is just not the same company anymore that it is now. Like, you can't compare it anymore. That's quite unfortunate, in my opinion. So obviously, they're doing most of the stuff just for the money nowadays. And I wouldn't be too surprised if one of the next things will be skins that you can already buy, while the game is still in the full bug modus, right? So, I don't know. I think, I think it's quite sad, but, yeah, I mean, we, we, we ki- kinda as a community brought this game from a grave into something that is alive again. And I still think that we are able to do so again, right? But it just feels bad because there was so much preparation for a remastered version. It felt so great when we finally got heard after so many years uh, that Warcraft is getting somewhat of a remaster or new patches, something that we had never thought about four years ago, five years ago, because we were still stuck on the same patch for so many years now. And all that hype, all that stuff that has been built for so many years has been basically gone after a release. And it's so freaking sad after so many years. Like, it really hurts when you see that as a fan of this game and actually company as well.
Agreed, yeah.
Yep.
BGR Criticism asked, Todd, would you guys enjoy? Actually, there, there's two typos in your sentence, dude. So, yeah, would you guys enjoy playing 4v4 pro games? I think possibly, like, I don't know, it's hard to tell. Like, I don't, I don't think I would enjoy it more than like solo or 2v2, but, you know, maybe I would play it and think that it's fun. What about you guys?
Well, imagine having an Annette as an ally and finally win.
Yeah, that'd be pretty sick. I play with Lucifer sometimes, yeah. And I'm watching the Infinite Desk God Nova Impale that he's throwing with my brilliant Zora. I'm like, yeah. I guess I'm just extending Archmage. They are just providing aura. That's great.
I mean, fours are honestly really fun, especially if you got like four good people versus four good, because there's so many different strategies you can do right now.
But like a tournament in 4v4, you think, like, you'd have fun with?
I think it would be fun. I think it would be fun from a spectator or a player point of view. Uh, it's, I, I wouldn't have the highest expectations of like seeing new metas come out, but would it be fun? Absolutely. I think it would be fun.
What do you mean new metas? It's 4v4.
Yeah, no. I mean, they're not gonna like redefine the, the genre by playing 4v4, but in terms, if, if you take it with a lighthearted view and understand that it's 4v4 and basically anything can happen, I think it's, uh, I think it would be fun. Yeah.
MythRando asked, would it be a good idea to host an off-race tournament? For example, Force Happy to not land dead. My guess, he will still win and I he will still win and I believe it can show especially new players that Undead is not OP. But that Happy is just the best player. I believe these nonsensical balance discussions are hurting the game. PS, a 2000% play Undead, no, sorry. That part wasn't true, but well, it's, what do you guys think?
I mean, we have the tournaments already every now and then, random, random tournaments. And actually, uh, Happy, once he does play, like if they're prizepools, it's good enough, he usually does win those as well.
Yeah, what happens?
People that play those.
Like, what what happens with people that can play all the races, like in Infi, for instance, like what would be his off-race? I mean, it's harder to master all the races on-
Yeah.
But yeah, in the end, I think it's better if if everyone plays the one that he's most comfortable with and can produce the best outcome, outcome. So as a series format, I don't, I don't think off-racing would be like something that would have a big future.
Todd, do you think Blizzard has intention of supporting Warcraft III? Uh, I think so, yeah, like I feel like, you know, we talk about like the support that they might be, even though like, you know, some people refunded, then it was like pretty disastrous launch, everybody agrees on that. I feel like it's in Blizzard's best interest to uh, to do some stuff, you know? I wanna be optimistic and I don't wanna just say like do a minimum, you know, and just fix a few things and say like, oh yeah, like no, we we delivered there, like, you know, the launch wasn't the experience that you guys were already for, but then we worked on it and then we fixed the game, like even though they would just do the minimum. So I'm really hoping personally, I wanna stay optimistic that they will keep on working actively on the game, they will, you know, fix a lot of this stuff like the joint bug, add profiles, add some sort of ladder and then just keep working on the game, keep in-game hotkey support, you know, like, I feel like this is maybe not the number one priority, but eventually I would love for that to be in the game, so I can finally bind something else and my goddamn numpad for my staff and my TP and I stop losing my heroes all the time. I think that'd be great, even for newer players as well. That's something that we all agree should have been in reforge when it came out. What do you guys think?
Yeah, I also think that uh, even though the community is like really hating Blizzard now, I think if they would show the effort and actually change the stuff that we need, I think the community would also forgive them again, you know, if they would kind of make sure we have a good game in the end, even if it takes half a year in the end, like, they probably should have postponed the the release, but they probably couldn't because of their internal timelines and probably pressure from Activision as well. But like, if they fix everything that we want them to fix, I I'm pretty sure that we would get them or give them a second chance and like the reviews on what's the site, Metacritic, the 0.5, that's probably like, it will take a while to get that back to something really high, but um, yeah, I think they just have to show us something now. That's why I said in the beginning of the cast here, um, I'm really curious if you will see something just before or during or just after Anaheim, some kind of like at least the new patch announcement or letting us know when we will have the ladder and the profiles. And I heard many people are struggling linking their old accounts, so for me personally, it's not a big deal because all my old accounts are deleted anyway since 10 years. Um, but for the people that played constantly and now they are like missing their stats and they can't link it, that's like, that's actually like a no-go. So if they can like bring out a good news in that regard, I think it would ease a lot of people and um, like a lot of people happy again, happy again.
Juan, do you wanna add anything?
No, no.
Lotto?
Uh, just like, I mean, I agree with everything Taker said, just one thing that's I I was thinking is the fact that it got that 0.5 on Metacritic was in a very, very weird way, almost a good thing, because it made so many headlines and it ju- it drew attention. It's kind of like the any publicity is good publicity or whatever, you know? And now, I don't think it's good as it like really, really good, but I I I also don't think it absolutely killed Warcraft in in the sense that if they do make the changes that we're talking about and they do show some support and put some resources behind the game, I think it is possible to make a return. I I think that, you know, seeing that 0.5 and being the lowest rated game ever in the history is almost better than it having like a 2.5 rating and just having headlines saying like, this is bad. Like, it was on the front of YouTube for, there were so many people that basically cashed in on the the quote-unquote hype that Warcraft was the worst game in PC history. And and and, you know, it was all over YouTube. People loved making videos about why it was so bad. It was all over the place. So I don't see it ever recovering from that 0.5, but in a weird way, it's almost like that 0.5 is kind of better than if it was just mediocre.
Uh, Subby Gamer asked, Todd, what do you guys think of if they release a fifth race after Anaheim? Will it change the whole game for the better?
That's not gonna happen.
They don't have the resources to do that fifth race.
Why would they release Moon is in jail? Uh, no, yeah, this is not the priority at all, I think, like, I don't think uh, anybody is even like really thinking about something like that, like first, we need like the stuff that we need to be working, you know, the joint bugs, all that stuff. You know, hotkeys take more of a priority than adding something like a new racing Warcraft in my opinion, so.
I think the chances of a fifth race coming are just about the same as a Warcraft IV, so.
Uh, okay, I think we've covered quite a few things. That's gonna be it for this show. Uh, thank you very much, everybody, for tuning in and you guys for joining me. Let's do shot, some shout-outs. Uh, where can you, where can everybody uh, follow you? Twitter, Facebook, Snapchat? You name it, it's like Twitch, yeah, Tik, TikTok, whatever, I don't even know, like, I've never used this thing, but OC, go first.
Uh, you guys can follow me on uh, Twitch slash they call me OC, just like my name on the uh, camera. Um, I don't really use Twitter that much. I'm trying to get better at it, but my Twitter account is dust underscore OC. Uh, as far as other stuff, I I don't really use it, so don't even bother following me. Just those two things.
Take her.
Uh, for me, it's the same for Twitch, um, Twitter and also YouTube. It's uh, all of them is Tower Taker with the three instead of the R in the end.
Yeah, but like, can you list everything where people can show you?
Ah, yeah, basically, I'm just really active on like Twitch is the main one, of course, and Twitter, that's what I'm using to like announce stuff. And yeah, I'm trying to upload at least one top game every weekend, so now I've got like 10, 15 games on my YouTube channel and um, yeah, I'm trying to keep that up. And I had a few games against good people as well, even like bizarre. Um, so most of the games are not like lower level on the skill, but hopefully entertaining, so check it out.
Yeah, I saw you posted a game against Ena. I was like, oh nice, Taker beat Ena or something.
High, high level of mirror, man. That's actually a good one, should check it out.
Uh, Juan?
Yeah, if you wanna follow me on uh, Twitch, it's uh, twitch.tv/1v7 and for Twitter, it's at 1v77.
I guess these are, these are, are your only two main. Of course, I'll I'll post all of these links uh, in the description for the video on YouTube. Uh, for Krota as well, like all of his stuff. And if you guys are listening through this, through one of the podcasts, uh, then I think you can just go to my YouTube, find out, fi- uh, find the link to this uh, episode, episode three of the tunnel meeting, and then there'll be all the, all the links in the description. Lotto?
Uh, I'm most active on Twitch. I stream at twitch.tv/lottoslounge and I also cast games from time to time. And I I do have a Twitter, my Twitter is at Lotto Blanco, but I almost never use it. I should start using it more often. But the main, main way to follow me is twitch.tv/lottoslounge.
Uh, actually, you need to start using Twitter more. This isn't acceptable.
Yeah, I know.
Uh, all right, guys, thank you so much. And I will see you another time. Like, you guys are welcome to come back on the show anytime and uh, I hope to hear from you guys very soon.
Awesome.
Thank you. See you guys later. All right, um, let me see, so it's time to do some shout-outs on my own here. Uh, if you guys want to follow me, of course, all of my socia ls are under the stream if you're watching live. Uh, I'm at Yuan Merlo on Twitter, at Yuan Merlo on Facebook, uh, Todd on Twitch, Todd Gaming on YouTube. And of course, make sure to check out the Patreon here for the show. And uh, yeah, if you guys, by the way, in the call, just can mute Juan Lotto. Thank you. Um, yeah, so patreon.com/todgaming. Um, I'm trying to build that up as well for, so that you can get uh, early access to a lot of the content that I'm making, whether it's tutorials, this show, and some interviews that I'm gonna do in the future, I'm sure with some of the guests that were there as well. Uh, yeah, like, there's different tiers, different rewards, you can get replays for like the $5 supporters and upwards. And I think we're available on multiple platforms now as well, uh, in terms of podcasts. We're already on Spotify, we're on SoundCloud, we're on Podbean and the future. I think we're gonna work on getting uh, on other platforms as well, but yeah, obviously uh, YouTube was the initial first one as well, where you can see our pretty faces while the show is going on. So, yeah, that's gonna be it for today, guys. Thank you very much for tuning in and we'll see you next time on another episode of the Tunnel Meeting. Have a great day.